Okay, welcome everybody to the town board work session of Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. We're gonna start off with a continuation of a public hearing regarding proposing law amendment, Chapter 111 of the town code concerning snow removal and sidewalk repair. The public hearing is continued from December 11th. And that we have a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
For favor, aye. So Nick, you wanna give us a little background and then we'll jump into some public comments?
Certainly, so the town currently has a sidewalk ordinance that requires, among other things, that after 24 hours that the sidewalk be cleared of any snow. And that is the responsibility of the homeowner. And then if it's not done, the town then under the laws the ability to issue a violation, perform that work itself and charge that cost back to the property owner. There was just a couple of discussions at workshops about whether 24 hours especially in the business district was the appropriate time. We looked at a couple of other ordinances, including New York City and some other municipalities. And there's a wide range, some have 24 hours, others have different hours. So then the town board decided to at least introduce a local law, hold a public hearing, receive feedback from the public on reducing the hours to what is supposed in the local law.
What?
Four hours, I'm sorry, four hours after the snowfall ceases. So tonight you just have...
Well, but it was not between certain hours.
Oh, correct, right. Thank you.
Okay, so basically, we have a signing sheet?
Yeah.
Just a little background, nothing has been decided, this is just a public hearing and we're certainly... When we hear these suggestions, they're all gonna be taken into consideration, so...
I don't have a comment yet, I know we'll wait for that, but I have a scope question. I'm sorry, Nick, are you the town attorney?
The town attorney, yes.
Great. Is this new law gonna apply only to the business district? Because I thought those words came out of your mouth. Or does it apply throughout the town?
Well, I understand you, let me just make sure I'm reading from the law in the latest draft I have in front of me.
So just as Nick is reviewing that, I would just ask people who speak to give their names. You're Tom Keen?
Thank you, sir.
No, it is within four hours throughout the town. I was mistaken when I said that earlier.
I thought we had explicitly said it was the business district.
Except the timeframe of...
Then that's a mistake.
The goal was to clean, yeah, to clear the business district. Right, so on page three of the local law, right, saying within four hours that the snowfall ceases.
Owner and occupant of premises abutting any street where the sidewalk has been laid
Right.
shall keep the sidewalk clean.
So it's, right, throughout?
Unless we're gonna put in a map and limit it.
Right, so currently as drafted, it is just within the, it is throughout the town.
I think that's a mistake.
Well, yeah, our goal was for the businesses.
Was for the business district.
Was for the businesses.
Okay. So then we would amend it to reflect that. So the intentionment of the board would be to amend it to reflect that it's just in the business districts and...
Check up.
I'm sorry, I don't know what people have to say, but that was the intent, absolutely.
So where would we envision along King Street, the parameters of this thing?
Thinking out loud, I would imagine really coming down the King Street.
Well, the way it works in New York City is, you don't have to do it like that. You basically just, you define as the abutting property owner being commercial property.
Would that make a patchwork of potential...
If you have a commercial property, yeah.
You got potential patchwork of cleaned and stolen, the non-clean and non-slept.
It would, it would, in the city it's like that. I mean, it's basically, if you have a brownstone, you know, the residential is treated differently than the commercial building because of the risk that's put on the commercial property owners and the staff that they have, and that's the way it's done.
There's no residential, probably the law, I'm just thinking out loud, there's no residential, when I say downtown at the intersection, Starbucks.
Lower King, so yes, so...
There is no residential there.
Not on the ground floor.
No, but still, but it'd still be adjacent to a commercial, so that would be moot.
So Lower King, so I think the question ends up being, when you start going up King Street, hills...
Right.
Right, like you can't go from Walgreens down, you hit residential then.
But you look at commercial too.
But there's not sidewalks all the way down.
There are sidewalks all the way down.
And it is a mix of commercial and residential, it's where I happen to live.
Yeah, right.
I'm an expert at snow blowing King Street, I've lived there for 21 years and I blow a large stretch of, very, you know, seriously, I take my... So just for record, you can get your name added. I'm Thomas Hines, and I live at 277 King Street, which is between Castle Road and Maple Avenue.
Okay.
Because of the size of situation of my property, I have, I probably clear the most snow on King Street because I have the most road frontage. I walked with the train for 21 years, so I understood how important it is, I knew all the morning walkers.
Yeah, and that actually was the impetus for us revisiting the local law that we had and trying to figure out if there was a way that we could try to make that walk safer for our early morning commuters going down there.
Well, I get it.
And also, I think additionally, just for people who ultimately want to shop downtown and be downtown, especially after we do the work downtown, so that it's not just a small little corridor footpath and hours later, somebody is coming and clearing.
People dig like a 12-inch tunnel down the sidewalk. That's why I have a snow blower.
And that's terrific, I'm not saying that in a patronizing way, there's other people who may not be as diligent.
And 24 hours is really not, that's too long a period. To allow snow to stay there for 24 hours is not fair to the community. And as an expert, snow removal person, it's a bad idea, it gets hard, it gets compacted. Right, right. But it leads to another issue. If you look at King Street from Castle Road to Maple Avenue, the transition from the street to the sidewalk, there's almost none of that grassy patch. There's usually a three or four-foot patch, there's nothing. It just goes street, sidewalk. If you're on that sidewalk and a plow is coming down the hill, it's terrifying. Giant plow, they come right to the edge of the curb and they continually fill what you've snowblown because they just keep plowing and they keep moving the snow over and it would be physically difficult to clear in four hours because the town's not done in four hours and they will plow in what I have recently cleared because of the way the sidewalk is designed.
That's interesting.
The new sidewalks, they make you do the snowshelves.
Right.
Right, and...
Well, maybe that's a way to maybe incorporate the location for at least, the possibility, the new sidewalk, which would prevent this issue that you've raised.
Right, but the problem ends up being, so...
But we still want that area clear.
No, I understand that, but maybe there could be a different regulation outside of that business district with the new sidewalks.
We'd have to define that area, then have a different regulation. We can do it if we even have a definable area.
Well, it is a definable area.
But still, we still only want this to apply to the business districts, so... Mr. Hines, is it Hines? It's Hines. Hines, sorry. It wouldn't affect you anyway, I'm not saying you don't care, but I'm just saying this wouldn't, this shouldn't affect you what we're trying to do here, which was in the business districts.
I kind of view the business district as being, in essence, Le Jardin.
Right, but the commuters, the people who live in the general vicinity who are walking down those sidewalks to the train station in the morning are slipping and sliding all over the place.
And it's dangerous on that steep hill.
Yeah, on the hill, it's really just a tough thing. And there's actually quite a number of people who walk in and we really would like to encourage them to walk.
But we actually receive complaints from people about the sidewalks not being shovelled.
Yes, every winter we do.
So...
And certainly, the business district goes further up.
I always assumed I got ticketed for not doing it, but I don't know. No, we try not to, you know, it's a balancing act, you wanna be fair. You know, you wanna keep the sidewalk safe, but you also don't wanna, you know, like, merchants having enough trouble with staying in business and start finding them every time, you know. Because what happens is that pedestrians, if the sidewalks aren't plowed, they walk in King Street, which...
It certainly...
That's not the ideal solution. Tom, just one second, Eric Nicolays, an age before beauty, Tom. Eric?
Thank you.
I sent you an email. The problem exists that the town has not cleaned the side of the roads and/or the parking lots until probably some six to seven hours after the snow finishes. So it continually repositions along all of the roads or along the steps. So even if you clear it shortly, you're gonna get stuff tossed back in. So the four hours, as I pointed out in my email, is an excessively short period of time, particularly as I mentioned on Sunday mornings, where there's few businesses that are open by nine o'clock if you operate off your five o'clock time that you're setting forth. So you've gotta extend the time, what's reasonable, I'll take it down to 24, but certainly not, it's gotta go beyond four at a minimum. Second question...
Well, that's an interesting point though, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You know, Sundays, we're not worried about commuters walking to the train and things like that.
That's an excellent point, Eric, thank you.
That's a very good point.
Yeah, but what I'm also saying is that the traffic running through when the storm finishes, many of the stores may be delayed because people, the employees are not getting in. You're also dealing with, I see very few, I'm always down there because I'm available for emergency services and therefore I go to work, no matter what the conditions are. But the answer is that I don't see that many people out working, walking, excuse me, in the beginning section. Takes a good eight to 12 hours before I start to see any substantial volume of traffic with a possible exception of going to work in the morning. The other question which I raised is whether or not you have jurisdiction over in front of my building because we had an auto accident where there was grease spilt on my sidewalk and I had to go to the county for approval. They inspected, I tore it up, replaced it, they came back and inspected to make sure they were satisfied with the job. So as far as I'm concerned, you got a jurisdictional question if you're gonna enforce this thing here at least along South Greeley Avenue, which is a county road.
So even though it's along a county road, Eric was responsible to actually replace the damaged sidewalk.
Right, right.
But the county required a permit of him and then the county also then inspected it to make sure it was according to their specifications.
They gave me certain specifications and...
But he had to replace it. Even though it's, you know, the county's side.
Right, but aren't we taking them, aren't we getting them?
I don't think down here, I mean, we have...
Just up there?
Yeah, over here.
Well, I'm not so sure that this, then remember, that's a county road out there too.
No, 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 we've asked the county whether or not we can take possession, ownership, of this section, of South Greeley, because we're gonna be repainting it, we...
Well, I understand that, but I mean, I've repaved mine four or five times over the years and effectively, it's been done sort of between both organizations. However, been the specific damage to the thing that occurred by an oil spill, which spilled both on the road and on the sidewalk, and required eight or 10 feet of sidewalk to be replaced. The county was the one that came in, inspected, gave me the plans, told me what I had to do, and came back and re-inspected afterwards.
Nick, does the county have any legislation or rules about...
I'll check.
Because it would be disheartening if by saying, "No, it's not our jurisdiction," we go to the county and I don't know what other municipalities have asked the county this question. Now, the county informs is something which is not maybe good for Yonkers or Mount Vernon, a more urban area, or Mount Kisco downtown and not Newcastle. So you go from the, what is it, the expression, from the frying pan into the fryer. So I think we should be careful what we wish for and try to work together to figure this out.
Well, I'm simply commenting based on past history. The county has some sort of say along South Greeley Avenue.
The intent here is not to overly burden you as a business owner, but it's to arguably do quite the opposite, so that people want to come downtown, people can come downtown, and then just folks who are walking back and forth in the train.
I know, but what I'm saying is that when I'm out there shoveling, the bank as an example may be closed. Nobody is, they have, they hire people, but what schedule they operate under, I don't know. But the bank will be closed and it's not done, mine has been done. Maybe I've had to go back out and do it again when the snow plows came through. But there are stores, the ordinary is not open because there's no customers going in to the ordinary, et cetera, and it repeats.
Dating yourself when you say the ordinary.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry.
Dating yourself when you say the ordinary. Very few people in this room know what that is.
I'm sorry, I confused that with the one that's near me right now. But I'm just simply saying is that there has to be some flexibility, both as to time and as to doing the system after the town is through.
Eric, what do you think about the idea, just to put it out there, if we formed a business improvement district and the town took care of the sidewalks, not only in the summer, but in the winter, and that way...
Yeah, it sounds great.
There's a cost to the businesses though.
I mean, we're gonna get you, don't worry, you're there, I promise.
The answer is, that's a possibility, but you have to remember you're dealing with a parking district and therefore would have to be funded by additional funds to the parking district. And right now, I'm paying more in parking district funds than I'm paying for town taxes. So I'm not so sure, there's only 26 of us in that particular district. I'm not so sure I'd be wild about adding additional costs. I think I'd prefer to shovel it myself, but that's beside it.
Maybe if we add additional costs...
We gotta get Tom next, keep it away.
That's okay.
Tom's next, Tom.
I do wanna follow up on a couple of things he said, and that's an excellent point. If in front of, for example, 18 South Greeley, because I'm not here as a scout master tonight, I'm here as the husband of Susan Keen, who is the owner of The Cosmetic Boutique, which has been in business since 2008. If you're gonna change the law to impose liability on the shop owners, because let's face it, it goes, as long as the building is occupied, it's gonna go from you to the owner to the shopkeeper. That's a fact, okay? But if you can do it, don't do it for the county, okay? If that's, if somebody falls in front of 18 South Greeley, let's make it personal. Are they gonna sue the town? Well, they can sue anybody, it's a problem, I know. But is the proper defendant, the town or the county? If it's the county, why the heck do you wanna take the burden from them and put it on shop owners? Because shop owners are up against the internet and there are no sidewalks on the internet.
Right now, we're responsible.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
If somebody slips on ice, you're responsible as a tenant. I'm responsible as the building owner, and my tenants are responsible.
Depending what it says in the lease.
Yeah.
They're putting a right to sue right into this new law.
It's in the ordinance right now.
Okay. The other point I wanna make is, this is the most onerous timeframe that I know about. I haven't ever seen a timeframe of less than four hours. The four-hour timeframe I know is the administrative code of the City of New York 16-123, which is a four hour, and again, I think that's the shortest on record. But this is even shorter because they exempt the hours from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. You're exempting the hours from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So you're making this quite possibly the most onerous sidewalk statute in the state of New York, okay?
We, that's why we're having the public comment.
Can I ask a question? I live on King Street between the mobile station and Grafflin School. We all got letters saying that we were all of a sudden gonna be responsible for cleaning the sidewalk, we're liable to be sued, we're all...
No, no, sorry, yeah, so time out on that. You got the letters just because you're actually within the sidewalk district and... The town of Newcastle maintains that sidewalk.
I know they do.
So we're the ones that are responsible for shoveling, maintaining it. As you notice, we actually did half of the sidewalk, we'll be doing the other half in the spring as soon as Con Ed is done with this. Just because we didn't have a complete mailing list, so we just sent it out to everybody in the district just so that we would, we didn't need to alarm you, but we wanted you to be just aware of this.
Alarmed.
Like, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You just haven't slept in days.
I'm sorry.
Haven't eaten.
I hope you're saying that in jest. So, just to be clear, from mobile station to Grafflin School, you are in the sidewalk district.
We're not subject to...
But you are not subject to this, okay? The town maintains the sidewalk, we just put a beautiful new sidewalk in half of it from Ridgewood Terrace going up.
I saw it, it looks very nice.
And as soon as Con Ed finishes the rest of their gas main work, that's going to rip out the bottom half from Ridgewood Terrace to Elm. We will be back putting in granite curving and a brand-new sidewalk there as well. But in the interim, because the sidewalk was in such lousy condition, we just blacktopped those sections.
We got, I won't bet a read on that.
If we give you some cookies that we have from our reception, would that make it up? See, you haven't eaten a couple of days, you deserve them.
We need a drink.
Sorry, we're sound property, we're not allowed.
Yeah, the letters are, where are I disturbed.
I'm sorry.
My next-door neighbor, Jimmy Fitzgerald, who was castaway years ago, is turning over his grave.
I was serious about the cookies, or other cookies.
He doesn't know yet.
This is within the hamlets, it's an all-things.
Oh, you can call her, okay.
It does say within the hamlets.
I don't wanna ruin your vacation, go left.
All right, well, all of that is well said.
All right, so that's good, good night.
You can stay if you want. No, stay, stay, please.
We're earnest about the cookies though.
Actually, we have some cookies here. We're talking about...
Pass them around, maybe it works a while.
No, no, no.
Yes, right, here, my, what's for my cookies?
No, 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 really, thank you, thank you.
Leave it on the table here, it's a piece of bread. Why, you eat a couple of days, then you go to town and...
And I'm so sorry, no, 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 and seriously, it's within the hamlets.
You're not, you're not, that's why we already did the sidewalks.
Yeah, put them right in front of your desk.
All right, we're sorry about that.
Eric, Tom, Eric. I'm happy. Do you have a point of view in terms of what you think a reasonable amount of time?
What I would do is I would take a look at what the town normally takes to finish their plowing, it's five, six hours, and then add an hour or two beyond that.
Oh, that's Jerry, but I think you're talking positive to like, I think it's...
We have to check the deep, as to what their normal schedule is.
Fair enough, yeah, finish it for snowfall.
On a thing, because it's this hard thing to go out and clean it and then get a whole little dump back in it, you know.
I think everyone here is willing to listen, no one's married to that timeframe.
No, 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 we just do the 24 was too, was too long and...
Well, my personal feeling is most people, once the plows are through, if the stores are open, the majority of the merchants go out and clean the stuff and have moved it over to the side so they've got a path open. There are a few people who don't do it, and that's why I suggested my email that if somebody called them up for this couple of snowstorms, they would probably would shape up and stop doing that. But I think it's unreasonable, you know, until such time as the town is finished to go. But I mean, I noticed even when the guys are going over the bridge with the snow blower, that they go over one side, the town comes along, blows behind them. Guys gotta go back over the other way and clean it up again, you know.
One thing that is important to note, merely because we can, when I say we, meaning the law allows, doesn't mean it in fact happens. And what I mean by that even further is the enforcement can give someone a warning without automatically ticketing somebody, it's their discretion. That's one of the things that they have, is discretion. And even if a ticket is given, the prosecutor has discretion. So I don't think, based on my experience, and I have not been here 21 years on that, but I've been 11 years and was a prosecutor...
I never knew how it worked, I never...
No, but I'm saying routinely, there's plenty of discretion. No one wants to hurt a local business by any stretch of imagination, pardon me.
But if it takes 24 hours, it's still not cleared.
Right, so merely because the town can, doesn't mean it will and does.
Might be a solution in search of a problem. Think about that.
Well, my feeling is, a couple of phone calls to the people who aren't cleaning
It was hurt, I like that one.
would show a lot of your problems. But, you know, I mean, you wanna pass the ordinance, okay, but let's not get carried away.
No, but listen to what you have to say, very well said.
No, I mean, I think if we're creating something on the books that's gonna cause agita and that's unreasonable, we shouldn't put it on the books. We should come up with something more reasonable.
We wanna find the right balance between getting people into the stores, getting it clean and making it safe, and being able to allow residents to walk down without putting too much onus on business owners. We don't want you to come out when it's unsafe to shovel either, so...
And Eric, the genesis of it was that last winter, there were certain shopkeepers, not using names specifically, but they would literally dig, you know, if the sidewalk's 36 inches, they would literally dig like a six or eight-inch wide pad when you had to walk sideways.
Mr. Hines, to your point, when you don't clear it, it becomes ice and becomes a nightmare, then you're stuck.
And it was like, it was like...
Until you come in with that follow-up cleanup.
No, no, but this was, they just didn't, it was just...
I know, but what I'm saying is that the mound, the mound, depending upon the size of the snowstorm, can pretty well occupy the mound, it's fairly high and takes up a significant amount. So therefore, getting 12 or 18 inches is probably pushing it in some cases, depending upon the size of the snowstorm.
And I think the town board, like next year, you're gonna have to, you'd have to really look at it because we're gonna have a street scape and there's gonna be a lot more maintenance of the sidewalks, even in the summer, and garbage removal, routine of trees and all the benches and everything. And so I don't know if that's a bigger conversation as opposed to just doing this piecemeal, I don't know.
Well, I think, yeah, so I think what Adam's trying to do is put on notice is that there has been this idea of creating this sidewalk, this business improvement district and taking the burden onto the town to make sure that it gets done, whether it's summer or winter, and if there's an advantage, but I think we owe, personally, I think we owe you a better analysis of the costs.
For sure.
So...
Technically, under the terms of the parking district, I see no particular reason that the town can't adopt and clean the sidewalks as part of that special district. Because the definition or the writing of the district is anything that occurs within it, which includes cleaning up the leaves and garbage and everything else. The question basically is what's the best way to handle it? At present, most of us have been doing our own stuff, but if the board feels that they wanna expand on it, then again, like the banks, the banks hire outside people, most of the local merchants do it themselves. But if you look at the definition of the parking district, basically from Bank of America up to the pharmacy and over to the railroad tracks, et cetera, that's all within the parking district. And therefore, if you were gonna do it as a municipal project, my feeling is it probably would delve down to the parking district, not to the municipality as a whole.
So it's interesting what Eric raises because, and just in speaking with ELQ, I mean, if we're gonna be putting in these brand-new sidewalks, the last thing in the world we want is for a merchant to come along and dump whole bunches of salt on this brand-new sidewalk and have it destroyed within a year or two.
That's just that, if they start with the pigs and start chopping the guys.
So we, you know, they actually said to me magnesium is what you should put on the sidewalks, not even calcium chloride. So, you know, in order to protect our investment, maybe this is something that, you know, we've talked about it informally, that we need to spend a little bit more time delving into.
So then I think, you know, we should probably go and define the area. I think the parking district parameter probably is a good one.
Maybe that's a really good starting point.
Um, you know, I mean, I think things like picking up the garbage cans, I mean, we do it now, I don't know what we could do so much better, but if this isn't true incremental effort and we contract it out rather than add staff.
Well, the park, the place is pretty clean now.
No, Eric, it's definitely not, no way. No, I have to respectfully disagree. I mean, in other words, the downtown, like, is, after we do this project, you know, it's not what it should be.
Let me put it this way, they're stuck in the gutter, but that's a matter of the mechanical sweeping. And there are some places that leaves collect next to the buildings, et cetera, which should be treated in the parking areas and stuff like that, yes. What I'm saying is that by and large, it is not that bad. It could be better, but it's certainly not the worst I've ever seen.
What I suggest, and this is just an idea, if, I think there is to a certain extent an exigency for this because we don't wanna say, let's just put this off and look at this holistically in the summer, spring, winter, fall because it needs to be addressed, we know there was a problem last year and there will be a problem this year. So even if instead of it being four hours, which very well may not be, making up random numbers relatively speaking, whether it's six, eight, 10, or 12 hours, we should do something.
Right.
Whether that 24 becomes 20, whether it becomes 18, whether it becomes 12, whatever the number may be, I think something has to be in place because otherwise, we've done nothing, we've wasted another opportunity, great opportunity. We've, we have potentially hindered and hurt business and hurt people if we sit and do nothing because there needs to be something in effect. Whether that's, again, four hours may very well be completely the wrong answer, but it could be eight hours, it could be 10 hours, so we need something.
So I'm gonna ask DPW how long it take, they...
And clarify, I'm sorry, to clarify what constitutes snow removal from curb to curb, you know, from storefront to curb, as opposed to 12 inches does not count.
Yeah, clearly. So I'm gonna clarify with DPW. I like the idea of whatever DPW takes to clear from the last snowfall, whatever it is, and I think it's eight hours from the time the snow stops falling is when we're done. And I would add another two hours on today.
And the Sunday idea was a good idea.
Yeah, and that's what I want to ask you, could I get a clarification? So are weekends different or Sundays different, or we do different... So just Sundays, and then, but what about Saturdays? Do we wanna give a little bit of a...
Well, stores are generally open much earlier than they are on Sundays and eight hours is still a significant amount of time, plus if you did another two hours, potentially 10 hours still provides plenty of work.
Stores are gonna do it on their own, I mean, stores don't, you know, if they want it, they're open, they're gonna want their sidewalks to be clean.
But again, we had the issue last year where there was still...
Yeah, but there was also vacancies, you know, there was...
But vacancies now.
But they're gonna be filled up very soon.
Mr. Keen raised the time limits that we had excluded between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM and suggested that perhaps our window was a little bit too tight. What do you think about 9:00 PM or to 6:00 AM, how do you feel about that?
I agree with that, I think he's right.
I'm not wedded to that either, so nine to six is fine by me.
But if it's really that snowy, no one's rushing out of the house anyways.
City of New York says seven.
New York says seven.
The problem is, I think seven, if people are walking to work and they need to get down that hill, seven's a little late.
If you're gonna exempt single families or single family residing or single family residing in a two-family house, you're gonna get those patches.
10 hours deal, yeah. Ten hours beyond that, yeah, I mean, that's true.
So the period nine to six is one, the time period will not apply, so after six, they end at ten hours.
So we start at six.
So you're talking about to four?
If you go to ten hours, I got no problem.
Right, it's ten hours from six to seven. We're not saying you have to do it at seven, you got ten hours.
I think we're off. Yeah, so I think maybe we should leave the ten to five because it's, it's ten hours beyond that.
Well, whatever, it'll take ten to five, you decide it.
Tom, I think, I think your wife had something to say, I don't wanna, you know.
But I think also if we do it.
She had her hand up.
I yielded the floor to her, but she said, I think that Eric had spoken.
I have another question.
She had something else, it's right, this is resourceless, very resourceless.
My question is with regards to accumulation. Now, we were getting almost a foot, maybe sometimes even more, and you guys want the sidewalk completely cleared, but your plows are coming through and everything's being built up, where are we supposed to move it to? And it's being pushed right back on.
So, yeah, so in the downtown district, although we clearly want you to be able to put some sort of walkway and push to the side, when, after the snow falls, and Eric and I have had many spirited conversations about this, the, our DPW crews, when they do come back on duty, do come through with, they usually come through at like four in the morning or five in the morning with a backhoe and a truck and clear off the sidewalks and all that snow accumulation on the sides of the roads, you know, on, on the edges of the sidewalks and actually just get it out of the downtown because there is no place to put it, you're absolutely right. But the whole idea that, that at least if somebody's walking to the train station and wants to get into your store, there's a, there's a little pathway for them to get from the curb into your store and there. I mean, I think that's all we're trying to draw right now.
You confused me, Jill. No, I thought, I thought the intent here was to clear curb to.
But her point is, is that if you're talking about eighteen inches of snow and you have three feet of snow that's piled on the edge of the sidewalk, and we've had some of the head of snow.
But though, like, like, if you consider, I think the law has to be, I mean, everything has to be.
Nobody's gonna die.
Right, so no, right, so my point was is that we, we're not seeking for her to clear that entire sidewalk. We will come along and get rid of that snow, but we do expect store owners to take and at least clear a path so that people can get into their stores and people can walk to the train station.
Well, then, I think what we, then, are we, do we define them with like the entire sidewalk? How is the sidewalk defined? Because there was a conversation of a path versus the three feet that fundamentally is the sidewalk now, or the four feet that it's gonna be.
Right, I think it would be benefit from clarifying the law, the width that you want to clear.
Can I speak on that? There's been a whole lot of appellate division decisions on what is a sidewalk, and there's a case called Vusevich that we wanna take a look at. Because you wanna really define what you mean, because the Court of Appeals has decided when you say sidewalk, you do not mean tree well, okay? You do not mean curb, you only mean sidewalk. Now, you've got kind of a funky design that you're gonna put in, and certainly people will argue that, that the bulbs that stick out into the street are not sidewalk. You know, the pedestrian plazas, whatever you call, but they're not what is typically sidewalk. I don't want you to make this law. I, I, I want you to do, and I'm sorry, forgive me, I don't know your, what was suggested at the table, which is, if you're gonna, if you're gonna own this bit, this bit, this business district, if you're gonna own it, if you really wanna help the store owners, then do it yourself, clean it up yourself. I, I personally clean in front of Eighteen South Greeley from the door to the street, okay? It is clean, even the curb, even though it's not a sidewalk. And then what happens is the plow comes down the hill, and you can tell the difference because it's granulated. I'll come back an hour later and there's spray from the plow all over the sidewalk. Let's face it, we've decided to kiss cars' butts and not pedestrians' butts a long time ago. But when you clean the street the way that you do, you're, you're hurting your sidewalks. Now, from a legal point of view, somebody could argue that when you do that, let, let's just make it personal to me. I went out at eight o'clock in the morning and I cleaned the sidewalk, and I was smart enough to take a picture of it, okay? Three hours later, somebody falls on granulated, you know, that mushy slush that freezes again. I'm gonna say, when I sue me, that the town created that condition. You can pass as many laws as you want about the town not being liable for snow removal. If you create the condition, somebody will argue that you are in fact liable because you, you went beyond the law and you put snow and ice back on that sidewalk. And I've known Johnny come lately on this, I've sent an email to Rob about this a while ago. You guys are, you know, something has to be done. I know, A, the snow has to go somewhere, and B, the plows must work. But perhaps when they come down to the business district, they're a little bit more careful, they're a little bit slower, and they, they tilt the plow blades slightly different because they are just pounding it right in front of Starbucks, right in front of the empty Apothecary, right in front of Scoops, and right in front of Cosmetic Boutique and the eyeglass, it just gets pounded again. So we've been very conscientious tenants because I don't want anybody hurt.
I would think, and I mean, I don't know the answer, I'm a criminal lawyer, not a civil lawyer, so I, I don't know. But one would think that if the, if the, if the owner of the property adjacent to the sidewalk, or whatever it's defined as, it's their responsibility to keep it clean, it's their responsibility to keep it clean. But I, I don't.
I don't profess to be expedite.
I don't know, but, but we don't need to get caught in the weeds, I think the bottom line is we're listening to try to figure something out that works.
Okay.
But, but it needs to be some consistency, so we don't have the issues of, yes, you're suffering as a good owner, a good tenant, but there's others who are not doing their job, and it needs to be reinforced.
This lady who falls, that's gonna suffer and then she's gonna sue, but that's besides. This, this, if, if this is accurate, and Eric tells me that it's not, it's not exactly accurate, you're creating a cause of action for people to fall, who fall, to sue the owner of the real property. Is that new, or was that always in one eleven?
No, that, that is new language, that's, it's underlined on page four, one eleven dash sixteen point one.
Why you kill, why you kill us? Why does that make sense?
Does it make sense? It's common in statutes to pass that liability on.
The city of New York has eleven thousand miles of sidewalk. We don't. That's who has that in their, in their statute, okay? They have that many miles of sidewalk. We've got a business, because you're not gonna put it onto the people that you've just put sidewalks in for less than ten years ago going up Quaker, right? You're not gonna say, oh, congratulations, here's your new sidewalk, and by the way, now you're responsible, and somebody's gonna sue you for it, okay?
And I do think there's a certain point, which is if the long-term goal is to create more walkability, and we're gonna have to basically take property in order to create more walkable town, this would be a deterrent to people wanting to do that if they had to assume liability.
What are you talking about? If people wanted more sidewalk.
Taking property on one seventeen, is that what you're talking about?
It could be anywhere.
Anywhere.
Anywhere, any, if you wanna do it going from Millwood to Kidney, you wanna do it on one seventeen, you wanna create, you know.
Well, I understand what you're, I understand.
Right, the next time, the next time you're telling people you're putting sidewalks in, they're gonna say, no thanks. Is that, is that the point?
Well, those would be residential, it's not a business, it would be different. But the law would apply, this code language would apply, pass that liability on to the residential property owner.
And, and they're gonna say.
We just told them that we weren't gonna do that.
You're right, no, that was.
No, but this is, no, we just clarified, it is gonna pass it on to them, and Tom is correct.
Pull him back?
We're gonna pull him back in.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
No, 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 it's different, it's different.
No, 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 no.
No.
No, it's not, they're not, they're not in the hamlet personally.
Right.
No, I'm talking, is it your name, Tom?
It is, yes.
That's what I said, you are correct, the way, your interpretation, I think.
No, no, those folks, no, those folks are not liable.
No, those people don't, one twenty.
Those one, those guys aren't, but this is only the business district, but he's saying this, this applies to the whole town as it's written now.
As it's written now, right, we don't have to give a like that.
Right, so it needs to be changed because that's not, that's not right. The same thing with the one twenty sidewalk that goes over the bridge and, I don't know what direction it is, but, you know, over the bridge towards Roaring Brook School, that's town maintained.
When could we find out what it would cost to have the town take over the plowing of the sidewalks? Because from everything I'm hearing, it seems like that's probably the easiest way to go, unless it's, the cost is too onerous. Because then, business owners don't need to worry about it, we can make sure it's plowed and cleaned and magnesiumed and done properly.
And done properly, it doesn't damage.
I, I think that after these sidewalks are done, we're gonna wanna do it, you're gonna wanna control over it.
Right, so can we find out what that would cost now?
Yes.
The, the problem is, though, that we talked about is that if we do a business improvement district, and we, we could talk about the whole parking district, but if we do a business improvement district, it is, it's, it's a taxing entity. So it's, even if we, you know, even if we contribute like some of the Summit Greenfield mitigation money, it's still at the end of the day, a taxing entity on the.
Well, but frankly, it's not just downtown Chaffeequa, we have other, another hamlet.
We take care of a lot of sidewalks.
And so it should be, you know.
We take care of, right. The one twenty we take there, it's always a deal. That's a huge, that's a huge sidewalk.
Um, yes, so we do some of the sidewalks in Millwood as well, so in front of Rockies, we don't do. In front of Speckarelli's, we do not do, we do do a section of Station Place, where the new stone wall is that we put up, we do, we do that section there, so we, we're doing bits and pieces.
Right, so we should kind of standardize this, I think, and then see what it would, see what it would cost.
And by the way, the sidewalk in Station Place is, wasn't done properly and it's already destroyed.
Totally destroyed, that's, that's what happens when you put salt in.
Right, so that, like, fast forward five.
And we need to also just find out from a maintenance point of view, from Jerry, magnesium is much more expensive.
Sure.
I know it is, that's, you know, but.
You gotta do it, you know.
Yeah.
No, no, I understand, but.
It's more expensive to replace the sidewalks.
But that's, but salt just kills it, and think about the couple of bad winters we had, not to catch, but like.
To remember, the one with.
With snow never melted. That's the one, so you know, you gotta keep it there.
So, we're gonna keep it open up.
Okay, yeah, no, 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 it's, the public hearing.
We're adjourned, the public hearing.
Was there any other comments or what, any other comments?
Wait a second, let's just do.
On the public hearing?
Yeah, ninth, yeah, January ninth.
Tom, we're adjourned to the public hearing.
Keeping it open.
Thank you very much for calling us in.
Thank you very much.
Glad you got your ears, yeah. Well, the good news is, is to pick up the lumps.
Right, good night.
There's some, actually, before we move on, I was talking to, to Bob Lewis in the hallway, and he raised an issue that I actually thought would be important to, like, I know we don't have a public comment period here, but sort of an issue they think it's important for us to be aware of in terms of what's happening at the intersection of one seventeen and Bedford Road. I mean, one seventeen, and more of.
So we give it Bob, just an opportunity, he wants to share some information.
We didn't, we didn't adjourn.
Let's, let's think what's spoken here first.
No one, no one said.
No, there's no second or bold on it.
Oh, second, okay.
Well, favor, hi, hi. So it's adjourned to when?
January ninth.
January ninth.
January ninth, okay.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
If I could help, give me a holiday.
Okay. Was it shoveling or?
Thank you.
Yeah, I got a shovel for you.
It was around when they created the parking district, the rest of the concept, so.
You did help with the cookies, Eric, I've noticed.
They were good cookies, they're good cookies.
I happen to love racing cookies, so.
Thanks a lot.
Take one for the road. Have a nice evening.
Hi, Eric, yeah.
So Bob, there's an interesting issue we brought up.
Okay. I'm gonna try not to take too much time, but, let me give you a little bit background. I met with the superintendent of instruction effort of Chaffeequa Crossing with Jill's help a couple months ago, I think it was the middle of October. And so Dave Walsh, the, who works for Summit Greenfield, and John Azlan of CRM Construction, met with me, they gave me a set of plans, fourteen sheets of drawings of the intersection, and it took me a little while to digest what I was seeing. In the meantime, John had made an, laid out his plan to come do what he calls a layout, which means he's inspecting a property with his subcontractor to give me, you know, some reassurance that, that everything looks okay, and I had a couple of thoughts about maybe shifting, you know, one of the pole boxes in the ground so that it didn't interfere with my property. But what came to light for me was that the intersection is not likely to work the way that we think it will. There are buses that utilize that intersection, there are trucks. The arc on a bus is much wider than a car. The rear wheel of a car tracks at about a twenty-foot radius, the rear wheel of a bus tracks at about a thirty-five-foot radius, and the inside of the bus also makes a swing, and that's more like a forty-five to fifty-foot radius. That swing, I, I did a, I don't have a lot of copies because frankly, I thought I needed to present this better. But when a, when a bus makes a turn, it's going to eat into my property. The reason that this is not currently a problem is that the bus.
Wait, wait, makes a turn from where?
From Roaring Brook Road, it's bound to the south.
You mean like a school bus?
Yeah, a school bus.
Okay.
So there's, there's a.
Southbound.
There's a procession of buses going east on Roaring Brook Road and turning south on Bedford. And those buses currently turn into what is going to be the left turn lane from Bedford into Roaring Brook. We are now going to ask those buses to avoid that lane, I think, and use the new lane that's being built closer to my property.
Wouldn't you make sense because that would be the southbound lane?
It's the southbound lane, the new southbound lane, and that's what we would like to think will happen, that the bus will simply make the turn. But if you follow a semi-trailer, which has actually a tighter radius, you will find, they'll say, this vehicle makes wide right turns, and sure enough, the bus went, the truck facility is way out, and then anybody who's caught there is going to be crushed. Well, it's, I'm asking, why can't we have, I would like some assurance from a qualified person, maybe from DOT, maybe from a traffic consultant. But I can tell you that I've, I've done an awful lot of vehicular movement studies. And one of the earliest studies that I did, it wasn't a study, I was working on a building.
Bob, can I interrupt for a second, just before we even say what you would like, what are you seeing based on what you've presented here?
What I see is, I've tried to suggest that there is a vehicle, if you look at the little red dash lines, that is the, that is the inside wheel of the bus. If you look at the black lines that are inside of that, that's actually the swing of the long side of the bus.
I see.
And it does go over the property line. Now, if there's a taking, so be it, but let's design the thing so that we're not just simply surprised by it. So I would be much happier if we looked at the intersection and tried to come up with something that really worked. And if we do a good job of it, that's all I can ask.
Bob, did you bring this to the attention of SG when you met with them, with Dave Walsh or the contractors?
I haven't met with them since then. Dave said he was, not Dave, John said he was going to walk the site, he has not done that yet, I just had an email from him.
So they're not aware of your concern?
They're not aware of my concerns.
And the turning movements and radius that you had there, this is what you've plotted out?
Well, this, this drawing is, is quite a patchwork. It's my survey from Campbell Engineering. It's the drawings that SG prepared, Didney Tong and Mazer, and it's also turning templates that come from the New York State DOT. So I, I really don't know, I mean, I'm not a surveyor, so I, I did my best to project.
You raised a concern, at least we fact checked.
So we tried, we asked Bob, we brought it up together.
But my concern, listening to this from what, when he brought this up, the reason I'm concerned is we already know the traffic at that intersection is gonna be drastically increased, and they're, they're.
It's already horrible.
Yeah, and it already is bad, and if what you're doing all of a sudden is you're putting, and you're gonna have more trucks, even if they go out the other way, you're gonna have more, the buses are gonna be there, just more of everything. And if this is designed as an inordinately tight right, and there's gonna increase the potential number of accidents with the increased traffic, I think whether we have somebody from our side look at it, whether we work with Summit Greenfield and DOT to confirm that this is actually gonna work, that DOT needs to bless this, but it feels a little bit like we're on a slippery slope to going, whatever's been with them, always last minute, let's change the legislation, let's change this, let's change that, because they know that.
Last for fourteen years.
They know that the Whole Foods is gonna, they're gonna start construction on this road in March or April, and Whole Foods will open in early summer.
So I understand the concern, for all I know, it has been looked at by DOT and everyone's looked at, so let's start with raising the concern and find the out. There's a lot of assumptions, there's a lot of assumptions that are being made here, like, as if like people just took a little chart and it created circumstances. So I understand the concern.
No, no, but we need, Bob, to address it, because we would not have addressed it before.
No, no, but this is very valid, totally valid.
I, I, I think, I think it's valid, but to think that people haven't. I, I, I think, I think it's valid, but to think that people haven't studied this road and the turning radius of the buses.
But we're getting down to the short strokes here, and this is gonna happen in less than six months.
I, I understand that, I got a lot. But, I mean, it's a legitimate concern, but let's not jump to these conclusions that like, we just.
Very, very fair, very fair.
No, no, he's not saying, he's saying he wants it to be blessed.
Rob, she's, if you look at the north corner.
Let's make sure DOT looks at it.
If you would assume that our engineers have, or we can, we can certainly check it again.
But no, we know.
And by the way, the good thing is that road is, is very thick, we have a middle barrier, that if we have to make it a little smaller, we could. So we have, we, a very wide middle barrier.
Wide, wider, yeah, of the barriers.
Uh, that we preserved, which the neighbors wanted us to, and if we have to make it smaller, we can.
Bob, Rob, I don't, I don't think, it's not an attack on you or us, this is just merely an issue.
No, I, I just don't like, what, what I don't, what I, what I, and I just wanna point out is we have assumptions being built on top of assumptions. And that's a dangerous thing to do. Let's check it, and let's not start building assumptions on top of assumptions.
So what, what we'll do is we'll provide this, sit down with Sabrina, explain Mr. Lewis's concern, reach out to Mike Alante, then reach out to DOT, and circle back and see what the facts are and what the issues are, and then give you the assurances that you're looking for, which I understand.
Maybe we should talk to their track guy, too.
Yes, yes.
Whatever his name is.
If you don't mind.
Their track the guy, not, he was our guy.
I mean, I've been through this kind of.
Oh, it was our guy?
Bob, just.
Doctor Collins.
Bob, and there, I know what I'm looking at, okay?
He definitely.
There is a thirty-foot radius on this pavement. There is only a twenty-foot radius here.
Yeah.
What possessed them to put a tighter radius on this side except that they didn't wanna take my property? Well, that's nice, but if it doesn't work, then.
No, I don't see.
Let's, let's get the facts and then we'll get back to it.
And that's what, that's what Bob asked.
Thank you.
Right, so.
I already brought it up, cause I, I.
But thank you for raising it, cause I really don't wanna.
No, I, I.
It's following a week.
You know what also makes no sense?
Oh, what would we say?
What did be high school and.
Yeah, but, no, we have to check the facts, probably soon.
Makes no sense. There's always a police car there because they don't want you to use one of the lanes.
I don't think that's, we're gonna, you should, you're not.
Cause everyone's delighted.
It makes, yeah, it makes no sense because everybody done half the thing, which we've said a million times. The entrance of high school goes with.
No, no, but it should have been two lanes in and one lane out.
It goes with, and maybe once they had a traffic light and, and they finished, they only did a small part of it.
Not two lanes out and one lane in.
It's part of a grand plan that is not done yet, it's part of the traffic light.
I know, I know.
I'm not defending them, Mr. Lewis, I'm trying to stick to the realities, it's.
Drive a couple backwards.
Because they couldn't do that, so it was cool.
Two lanes in, and then two lanes out, one lane out.
Oh, I can't, so, like, so, right, so we have plans for Mr. Lewis, and then speak with Sabrina, and then probably, people will get back.
Cause I, I, look, I worry about that initially.
Next.
The home rule legislation, it's. So, um. Um. Um, so Mike had raised this when he first came on board, about our ability to lease space on the town sports field for not for proper organizations.
Right.
Um, so we just wanted the, uh, the town boards, um. Well, so we didn't put the draft legislation in here?
For clarity, we can't rent out space.
So New York State law says that you can't use public space for advertising purposes, how.
I'm sorry, it's a very aside, I got it.
It's good to give to public funds, so what we've done is we've worked with the Parks Department, we've identified that there are other municipalities that have obtained special home rule legislation from the New York State Legislature, and that allows the fencing to be rented out so long as those funds are reinvested for re-improvement of the park. Recommission has discussed that with the local sports association.
Does this mean for that park or for parks?
I believe, well, I believe parks in general, but I'll confirm that.
There's no difference between.
Did they do it in North Castle?
Right, so, so what we're asking is.
Yeah. No, as long as we can, it doesn't mean that park.
No, but if you took five thousand dollars for this park, that's five thousand dollars arguably less than.
The fields require a lot of maintenance. Every time it rains, they're putting down.
So then, what we're asking is just authorization to proceed with starting that process for the home rule, but it's a great idea.
Yes, totally.
And then, and then, uh, uh, Mr. Mer, Senator Murphy, and Senator Buckwald.
Who needs sponsor, yes. And, and anybody whose kid plays travel baseball realizes that every town has this.
Yeah.
Which I've been raising this issue for years, um, but it's good that we're gonna, uh.
We'll take it.
Do it.
Here, here.
So, uh, okay, next, uh, we have the, uh.
The gasoline, diesel, and heating oil tank removal replacement, you do whatever you seek.
Okay.
Um, so as part of, um, our, um, project to take and replace our currently buried fuel oil, diesel, and, um, heating oil tanks that are currently buried and replace them with above-ground tanks.
Is that DPW?
And explain what the end is for this, Susan.
I'm sorry?
What's the reason? Please share.
Oh, um, number one, they're already buried, tanks are a bad idea.
Tanks are twenty-eight years old and approaching life expectancy, so the prudent thing to do is to remove those tanks. And so there's going to be approximately five hundred thousand dollars in cost to remove those tanks. You need to make a determination of potential environmental significance. It needs to be now analyzed because you're not replacing it at the same location, because the tanks that are in existence need to be in operation for DPW properties purposes until you, the new tanks are operational. So the new tanks are going in a different area on the property. So Sabrina prepared an environmental assessment form, determined that based upon the location of the new tanks, there would not be any significant adverse environmental impacts. And the town board then needs to make that.
And just to more, again, for more purposes, for more clarity, there's no issue of leaking underground oil tanks now.
Not currently.
That's not the issue, not, right, we're not remedying a ongoing issue.
Not currently, not, no, right. That is correct.
We don't should be worried about that, it's being more proactive to best ensure it doesn't become an issue.
And, and this five hundred thousand has been in the, uh, it's in the bond issuance, and it's been one of the line items that, uh.
One last question, if you know the answer, uh, which I don't think I asked before, was, uh, what's the life expectancy of these oil tanks?
Thirty years?
Yeah.
The above-ground ones?
No, these are underground, the new ones will be above ground.
So what's the life expectancy of?
Thirty years.
Thirty years.
So we're hitting, so people understand, we're hitting the cusp of.
Absolutely, yes. These are nineteen eighty, October eighty-nine.
And you can't just pull it off and stick ones in the same spot, even if you were in climate.
We don't want.
You don't want to.
I'm, I'm just making.
Haven't had an oil tank that leaks under.
I'm asking for a toilet.
So the answer is you.
You don't wanna do.
You could put new underground tanks into the same tank grave, but given the operational.
Grave is a little harsh.
Good word. That's what it's called, though. Being a man in the business, that's what it's called, a tank grave. In the business. The grave, you went to check it out after thirty years. Even DOT and Milley, unfortunately, they put them above graves. So you, and you don't want, DPW still uses those tanks where it's ongoing operation, so they can't take those out of service, another phrase, and put new ones in service, uh, in the same place. So that's why. Out of service, you really got that fancy.
Yeah, yeah, graves are more impressive.
That's good.
It was good.
You were stretching that concept.
I mean, you wanna make sure you put the right apparatus there, too.
Not quite as good. All right, so, um.
So then you'll need to tonight adopt a negative declaration, which is.
So can we do that now?
You can tell, you can propose action.
Resolution. Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have it, yeah, okay. Proposed basketball court and playground, the same issue with the secret, uh, discussion.
Okay, I actually have a bit of a problem with this. I thought where we let off, I don't really have a problem with the NEG deck as the environmental assessment form is, um, outlined, um, and then I don't, and the resolution make reference to, you know, section three of it. But what we have is we have a description of the project, and in the description of the project, we talk about taking down the hill, taking down the twenty matured trees. I thought where we were as of the last series of emails among this group, that the urgency, the immediate urgency to find storage has been somewhat alleviated, and that the goal was to work with the environmental review board to try and come up with a consensus as to the right location. My concern, the way that this works, this is written.
Right, because, because when I read this, I read it as, the next, we're accepting as fact, for lack of a better term, that the hill is.
Is going.
Is going to have a grave.
So if you were to decide to move ahead with this project but not take the hill down, this EAF and this NEG deck would still be sufficient for your purpose going forward. This is not wedding you to do that work.
Right, so my feeling. But all I'm saying is, one of the attachments to this whole thing, and section three is innocuous enough. I'm not worried about that, not for the place. But when we go to page one and page two.
These are the, um, the reasons supporting.
Of the reasons supporting determination, this is not the pro, this may not be the project we ultimately create. And I kind of feel this adopting a NEG deck before this is resolved with the environmental review board, with this attachment in this description, is not accurately reflecting the intentions of this board. And so, since the urgency of doing a NEG deck, we can do a NEG deck with the support of the environmental review board.
We can't, we, not, and not, but we can't and borrow money.
But we can borrow the money.
No, we can't, not without the, um, the.
Right, but we can borrow next year.
No, we're trying to minimize the borrowing, uh, transactional, but that's why you lump everything together.
We, we, we tend not to borrow every year, we borrow every three years. We've already removed Nickel Dam from this borrowing, even though we know that we're going to have to do it before the next time, so that's at least to be.
But we're not borrowing massive amount of money, like, for the streetscape project. I mean, this amount of money, again, we can use it from the general fund and pay ourselves back when we go after borrow, just like we've been paying the million dollars towards getting the streetscape off the ground.
What did that language, it's, what did that language?
So you're saying you don't wanna bond for the basketball court? Would, take that off, is that what you're suggesting?
Uh, did you?
Nick.
No, because if we don't have the NEG deck, we can't bond for the basketball court, he's saying that we shouldn't bond for the basketball court.
No, no, what I said is. Uh, can I explain myself in order to make sure that I'm very clear?
No, I'd like it, so.
What I'm saying is, the language that's attached to the environmental assessment form does not reflect where we are right now with the environmental review board. And in fact, the proposed action includes the following, and assumes the removal of the hill and the removal of the trees. And yet, this is not resolved. What I'm saying is, we do not, if we take a NEG deck with inaccurate information.
But just explain that we're not married to it.
So what is my suggestion, why put that in there, then why not?
Then why take it, take it out?
Because you need to describe a project, so what you're, I understand what you're doing is describing the potential greatest extent of a project. So what if you had language that says, the, um, board continues to explore ways to further mitigate potential environmental impacts, and the final decision is not being made with respect to the description of the project? Or so that language indicate that it's not your final decision, everyone would agree, this is, if you were to proceed, that's the greatest potential impact, right?
And that's why we included it, because there would, there would be no impact greater than.
But this could also, to a certain extent, be viewed as, not, because we don't have any permits.
No.
But I think, I think adding that language is a good compromise.
Ultimately, the, the board would have to vote whether, in fact, this is what we collectively wanted to do.
Yeah, we have to pass that into the resolution.
Right, this is allowing you to vote the, the, the money in line to do it, but you've not authorized to spend the money or to proceed with the project. Those steps still have to occur.
Right, so, but again, so we're not authorizing to spend the money, right?
So, but again, why, why is?
So we have the NEG deck, but we don't have, do we have the bond in today's?
But, yes, yes.
Yes. Right, so, let's just talk about the timing of the bond. It is now, we, we're passing these resolutions. I know that, what's his name, Oric and, what are.
Herod and Suckler.
Yep. Are working on the, um.
We have the resolutions.
Resolutions, and then, uh, tomorrow in January. So, my understanding is we were going to,
We're gonna have.
January.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
In essence, having worked through this issue with the environmental review board by.
Well, we haven't worked through it.
No, we haven't, no, we haven't, no.
By the middle of January, by the middle of January is what we were talking about, right?
As a hopeful.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna bond for this tonight, and we're gonna vote on the negative declaration tonight. We're not putting off the bonding for the basketball court, if that's what you're suggesting.
Because it, it does, just, just.
I don't think, I don't think that's what Hollis, I'm gonna phrase it, it's not what Hollis said.
No, that's.
That's not what, I, the confusion and the concern, and, and, and I know, certainly John's here because I would assume, because your issues are concerning as well from reading this.
The hill, yeah, the, yeah, the hill.
Is, is, right, is, is the hill. And the way it reads to me is that we have concluded that the hill is going.
The hill doesn't matter. No, no, but not if we had the excitement.
The hill matters, the hill is.
As he just said, where it said, we haven't, uh.
Is special.
And you're saying, if I'm understanding, you're saying that the reason why the hill is there is because, I, I, what confuses me is what, it's sort of.
You, if you're going to do it after bond, it requires the secret be performed.
Understand.
So we need to, to, to find the project. And from my perspective, I wanted to find the project to its greatest extent, rather than have to come back later on.
But that is not what this says.
So this.
This is telling you exactly what we're doing, which is we're going.
No, it doesn't, we have to pass the resolution.
Going with the plan, the preferred plan.
Sure, so if we added the language that says the town continues to explore ways to mitigate those impacts, and a further decision will be made as to the.
Can we step back for one second? So what I think John may not realize, just because we came too late, cause we didn't realize. So, the basketball court, we've, has been, we've been looking at it for like fifteen years, where to put a basketball court.
If anybody used it, right?
And I think that.
I'm, I'm well aware, I'm well aware.
No, no, right, right.
Somebody used it.
I mean, we're talking about, so, anyway, anyway, anyway.
It's, 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 it's not, it's not inside, it's not inside.
We've been looking at it for fifteen years, right, where to put it, and I, and recently, we did kind of figure out that this place might be the best place, because we've looked at all the, all the other obvious places, Kennedy Park, all those places we've looked. So we think this may be the right place. That being said, we wanna work with the ERB to first see if maybe there is an, an alternate location that for some reason we don't know, and that if there isn't, and we said this last time, let's make the assumption that that is the exact place it should be. That then we wanna work to ensure that from a, an environmental perspective, that we make it as great as we can and mitigate whatever needs to be made, and maybe perhaps even make it better. And do buffers and everything else, and we wanna work with the ERB with that, and we've committed to doing that.
Right.
So I think what we're saying is, because it's expensive to issue bonds, that it's been a long cancel. No, I get all of that, but if we're not issuing the. We should do that, but if we, I, I'm comfortable if we put Nick's language in that says we still will look and work with the ERB and look for alternative sites, I think that kind of gets to what you're saying, where it's saying we haven't, we haven't committed to that spot, what we're saying, but we know we're committing to a basketball court.
I understand, let me ask a question, so I can understand this fully.
I agree, you're right.
I, I'm on board, and I've never shied from it, that I, I, I support this location, generally speaking. I have concerns, and I voiced that in my conversations with John about the hill. And I'm glad that we all, consensus said that was not a jump that we needed to make so quickly. This, this, no matter what going forward, whether we got the dollars, and we bonded, and we got the dollars, as it stands now, if we said, we want that hill, we would either have to go to the ERB to get an approval, or we would have to legislate and have a resolution to take that authority and bring it back to ourselves.
Cause it's, right, correct.
So, okay, so, so we would still need a majority of this board to say, irrespective of what this says.
Absolutely, this is just one step, or many more needs to be taken before.
That, that we are getting the dollars and securing the dollars for that playground and basketball court.
Yes, this allows you to have the funding in place should you proceed.
Which we will proceed in one way, I mean, I mean, I don't think we won't proceed.
Right, we're saying we want the money for a basketball court.
But we can't do anything to that hill, and I need to be clear on that, without the ERB's blessing.
Or the adoption of that, um, rule.
Or, or, or January, or February, this town board says we wanna, we wanna legislate to do that.
Right, without an affirmative action of this war.
The problem is, it seems, it seems like if we mention this hill, i- if we mention this hill, it raises all these red flags, and everything has to come to a halt because we mentioned the hill. This has nothing to do with taking the hill, either for storage and safety, or for making a great project for our downtown for the benefit of the residents. So you don't have to worry, this is going out to bond, this is declaring a negative declaration, and going out to bond as we plan to do, even though potentially it could involve the hill.
But, but to, to be clear, to be clear, the, the hill, I'm sorry, the, John.
I thought you said maybe you should say again.
Nick, because we have, this has been a big point of contention, isn't it?
Yeah, the hill.
That hill cannot be touched, barring our taking authority to do so from the ERB, or the ERB granting us their blessings.
That is a correct statement, yes.
Okay.
Well, we still need affirmative action on the board after that to then utilize the funds to build the basketball court.
John, John, John.
Right, correct.
That's one of the questions that I wanted to ask, but just to be clear, to to Rob's point. The the hill has turned into some huge cause celebre. The ERB is involved not because of the hill per se, but doing anything in the town hall parking lot area comes within our jurisdiction because it's within the hundred foot buffer. So whatever is in the buffer, whether it's a hill, whether it's a paved area, whether there's somebody's house that comes into our jurisdiction, so that's, our concern is overall what's being done in the buffer. And I guess the other thing, I just wanted to ask Nick, or um it sounds like we've been hearing it. I mean, I've done a fair amount of secret work in earlier phases of my career, so I'm pretty familiar with the process in general. And I know the distinction between making a determination of significance and approving a project itself. And that one is not the other. We were concerned when we saw what turned out to be the final EAF and the determination of significance, we had only, we hadn't seen that until today. ERB, all we saw was the part one of the EAF that was originally prepared and submitted to us with one page drawing back in October. And we were a little bit concerned when we saw that even though there had been an ERB meeting, well, first, there had been ERB written comments, which were submitted back to the board. There had been uh basically, for lack of a better word, a joint meeting, because some of the town board members and Jill appeared at our November meeting, where there was a lot of back and forth discussion. And there was subsequent discussion at this board, at two meetings since then. And there's been various emails back and forth describing the state of play or the state of the bidding, if you will. And none of that was reflected in the document that's the being submitted as the basis for the negative deck tonight. And that concerns me. And I know that to a certain extent, the concern, I don't wanna overblow it, because this is only a determination of significance. Nevertheless, to Hollis' point, to Jeremy's point. I think that to be fair, to give an accurate description of where this project is while still meeting the goals that Rob and Jill need to meet with the bonding. It just seems to me that maybe you back off a little bit in the description of the project. And rather than saying that it's going to involve this specific corner of the parking lot and take the hill.
Hmm.
That the project is going to be located, or we believe the preferred location for the project is in the area of town hall. Something like that, and say that alternatives are being explored, and we are pointing out these specific impacts as the greatest that could possibly occur.
Well, and that's.
I would not be comfortable with that, isn't that my love?
I would not connect just say, isn't that my love?
But that's not, but not, no, it's 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 not, it's.
No, that's not, not quite, I would feel more comfortable if that were true, that would, I would feel very comfortable.
And and with all due respect, please, it's not, it's not what you said either, because you were talking about highlighting, and I think this is what Nick mentioned also, is highlighting mitigation.
No, I wasn't talking about that, I was just talking to you, I was just giving my general overview.
And I'm talking about.
Alright, okay. So I'm I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with the language you said before, Nick.
I'm actually comfortable with some of the suggestions that he that he had, if it's possible to.
Okay.
Well.
I mean, what language would you propose?
I'm just wondering what the, I'm wondering what the issue with designing it that way would be, if that's really the intent.
Sure. Cause it's not necessary, does he, but he, he kept, he kept, he kept the general.
Wait, what language would you propose?
A couple, a couple points, one, a couple, but but a couple, a couple points, first off.
Let's let's hear from Nick, let's hear from Nick.
There's been a lead agency, notice circulated, there's been a determination of a lead agency, so it's unusual that the other involved agency would see the neg deck and be involved in the review of that. That wouldn't.
It was put on the public agenda, so.
No, no, right.
Right, but I don't wanna think this process is going throughout what Norman would go through the process, Sabrina prepared the the neg deck and the reason supporting it.
Wouldn't it have normally been in a pack if it was publicly distributed though?
It would have. It would have been in the package. Yeah, of course it was in the package.
It wasn't, it was nothing posted.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Yes.
The agenda is posted, agenda is.
No, no, the agenda was posted, but not the supporting document.
Sure.
No, sure, supporting documents, you just have to look.
Yes, the entire one.
It's all, it's.
Okay.
No, Rob.
Karen, did you post the packet?
It was.
Like every other Friday.
Every, every Friday.
Yes, every Friday.
When was it, tonight's packet was posted?
On Friday.
Every Friday is posted.
Yes, the packets are posted.
On Fridays.
I know they're supposed to be.
No, 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 they they were.
Yeah, I've got.
It's not on the website this morning, it wasn't, I just checked in four times.
Yes.
So the agenda was there, but no packet. The other point is that the when I stated, secret looks at the greatest potential impact of a project, so if for a lesser impact
Yes, of course.
Said the.
Or some early date.
It would be covered by the review that you're doing. So I think we're really actually saying the same thing, that.
Yeah, let's add that language, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, okay, this hill takes on.
No, excuse me, if you don't mind, Rob.
Excuse me, I will run the meeting.
No, Rob.
We are moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Let's, 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 John finish, I mean, let's.
Four, please, have a question, cause we have a big agenda, and it's nine fifteen, and this hill takes an enormous amount of time, it's ridiculous.
Okay. Nick. If if you were, this was.
Those are long.
There was some, there was some question.
It's definitely one hundred percent about the hill, go ahead.
There was, there was some question about what the process is from here on, can you lay out exactly what you believe, assuming that the neg deck.
Right, so.
Hold on, let me, let me just finish my, my question.
Sure.
Assuming the neg deck is adopted.
Right.
Assuming the bonding authority is voted. What do you believe remains to be done before this board could decide on a specific location and proceed to work?
Right, a determination with respect to the permits that would be issued by the ERB or not to be issued if the town board were to exercise its discretion under what's referred to as the Monroe doctrine. After that has occurred, then the town board would have to authorize the work to be performed. I don't know if it's being done in-house, or if you're putting it out to bid, whatever that process is, but the town board would then adopt a resolution that would trigger the expenditure of funds, so those are the two remaining steps.
So at this point, at this point, absent any kind of action to exempt the project from ERB jurisdiction.
Is that good? Say that again, I need just a second.
Absent action taken to exempt the project.
Absent any action taken to divest the ERB of jurisdiction.
Well, it's, 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 yeah, it's always there.
We checked in Friday.
Okay, I think he's explained the process.
With nickel, yeah.
I'm I'm in the middle of a sentence.
I didn't realize you were still in the middle of sentence, I I apologize, please finish your, finish, finish your sentence.
Thank you. Nothing could happen before there's an ERB permit.
Or a.
I said, I said, absent, absent any kind of move by this board to try and divest ERB of jurisdiction.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic, next item on the agenda.
So are you going to, excuse me, are you going to?
I'll draft that language, yes.
You'll draft that language.
I I wanna leave one last submit, you know, my, I wanna make it very clear my position, and 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 I'm sure it's Rob's positions too, Rob's position too. I don't wanna speak for Brian, I think it's clear for Brian, uh Sokolow and and Jill. The downtown, in my view, in this area here, meaning somewhere in this vicinity, is the best place. And I, my view, I understand we have different responsibilities as the ERB and the town board for this project, to bring people downtown to bring recreational activities downtown, to offset and mitigate what's happening in the new hamlet. And and how we get there, I'm a firm believer in process, this is not, when I read this, I thought this was saying that we were making that leap. And that's not the situation, now that I've read it and councils explain it and give me some more insight, these are two different steps that need to be taken. But I've been clear to you as well, I mean, I think downtown in this area is where this should be, so.
Just to be clear, we have.
We're not gonna talk about the basketball court.
We don't have, we don't have any objection necessarily to considering downtown. We think that that's fine, and the suggestion that I made for broadening the language here would include focusing on the downtown, even focusing on town hall.
Listen, we know that the ERB is looking for, is is trying to ex.
No, but they, they.
No, I I and we we know, we feel confident that the ERB, their main concern is is the buffer. And if we can do something where we actually increase the size of the buffer between town hall and 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 the commuter parking lot. I would think that the ERB would be thrilled, because that's what you care about, is the buffer, it's not about this hill, it's about, it's not about jurisdiction, it's about trying to do the win-win for the town, that's what you guys are care about.
I understand your position, John, I I I think we're good, so.
Terrific, next item on the agenda.
Thank you, John.
We move on to the authorization for engineering design services board boiler replacement.
Exciting.
That quite is controversial.
I know, yeah.
Has the, have they considered different colors, because that's something that's, I wanna fill out.
This is a request to hire Hazen and Sawyer for the engineering design services for the uh replacement of boilers within Millwood treatment plant.
Pleasantville's gonna chip in?
Yep, that's all comes out of their funds.
Okay.
Do we ever, I mean, Hazen and Sawyer seems to be like the preferred contractor, do we?
There are very few people that do this kind of work.
I, I understand that, but I mean, at some point, just in the process, I think it might prove us depending on the size of the award, to maybe circulate multiple bids rather than using the professional services non-bid process, because, I mean, all I'm saying is across all of the projects we have, and in particular, we're saying historic, and I'm sure they're excellent firm, and there's absolutely no problem with them. But there are actually a lot of money in professional services in this one field is being spent by the town. And it might prove us just to see if we can do a little better.
Okay, next thing, uh Suzie, thank you so much for your patience.
Sorry, Suzie.
I didn't realize we'd be spending more time on other topics. The clean energy communities grant, the electric vehicle. So we have a memo from the sustainability advisory board, and Suzie is here on behalf of the sustainability advisory board. And Jennifer submitted a very comprehensive memo, and which I thanked her for. And you're here to answer any questions. And it's, you know, as I've mentioned many times, and I'll be mentioning it again tonight. The sustainability advisory board has done a tremendous job for our town, and it's their work that made this grant possible. It's their recommendation that this grant be used for that purpose. And we've been through a process already, where we said that was the use we wanted for it. And and I think it's gonna be great, I think it's gonna, it's gonna, the memo is very comprehensive to cover the costs and and the use. And it's gonna enhance our our image as a green community and then save money, and be good for the environment, so I think it's fantastic.
My, my concern, Jennifer came and spoke to, actually, Hall and I were sitting together when we spoke. My concern was the long-term viability and the realistic use of this. And one of the things that we said to her when we were sitting there, and I'm sure whoever individually and together made the same comments probably reflected from the whole board in various capacities, was there's gotta be other uses than just the Summit Greenfield requirement. And I'm not convinced that it's going to be used that much, I'm not convinced that it's gonna go past two years. I, my understanding, Joe, tell me if I'm wrong, I understand we had at one point, or when I say we, I should, we, there was some form of bus system or 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 what's what I'm looking for, jitney type, it's it shuttle.
Trolley shuttle? Oh jitney, oh my gosh, that was.
The Reader's Digest?
Yeah, long, long time.
No, 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 he's talking about for the, for the train station parking.
For what is true though?
There was an alternate jitney service that used to park up at Walgreens because we had an overflow parking, so you're talking that was before two thousand and one, because.
And then what about the Reader's Digest? Well, there's another one, Reader's Digest.
That was just, there were so many parties, they operated a shuttle that went from the train up to Reader's Digest at certain times.
Reader's Digest used to.
So, you know, I I just, I I, as interesting in in, you know, showing that we're green and and important as that is, and knowing full well that we're gonna have at least a two-year period where it substitutes a gas operating vehicle. LEDs or whatever the light may not, may be, and not nearly as sexy and interesting in its show of environmental force. But I think it just may be more useful long-term value. And I'm really concerned about two or three years down the road, now we have this electric vehicle that's really not used, maybe we sell it, maybe we don't. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not wed, I'm not wedded to it, I'm really not wedded to it.
I do like the idea though.
You're you're missing, you're missing a big use, uh Sabrina, for the benefit of the board, can you please remind us Summit Greenfield's obligation to provide a shuttle, shuttle service, how many trips per day and for how many years?
So um Summit Greenfield is part of their approval, was required to promote efforts that connected their site, the population, both the residential population and the commercial population on their site to downtown Chapacua. Out of that bore a condition of their approval, which required them to run a train shuttle service from their site from at least two locations in their site during peak morning train service, an afternoon lunch service, and an evening peak service. It's not two hours during rush hour, it's all the peak trains and and it's.
It's four hours.
It's actually, yeah, four hours.
Yeah, exactly.
So a lunch, a lunch, right, so I'm familiar with.
The lunch is a little more flexible, like from eleven to two, it's not all day, but you know, there's a range in there when people typically take lunch. There are, it's within your ability to reduce the frequency, instead of every half hour during the lunch hour service, to make it every hour. It's completely within your board's control. They have a requirement to run during peak train times a lunch hour service, which wasn't specified other than saying lunch hour service and or hours or what is typical. And they have to do a Saturday morning service.
See, and the reason we liked that at the time was.
How many years? As much?
Two years for the last.
Two years.
Okay, the reason we liked that at the time was also because it would connect, please.
Definitely one two years.
It would connect the downtown to Chapacua Crossing, so if there are office workers or people living there, and we want them to come down for lunch and not have to get in a car and drive and add to the traffic, that shuttle will be provided.
No, I totally understand the idea of the shuttle, and I think especially once you have a hundred and eleven townhomes and sixty-eight units.
Yeah, there should be somewhere three hundred.
There's gonna be, that, the, the, I think the requirement that was included in the plan makes complete sense. A lot of other sort of townhomes all around the rail commuter line have jitneys that bring their people down and take them back up and so and so forth.
It's also for the affordable, just added in.
Um but I think my concern has been this, it it two hundred and forty thousand dollar vehicle. Mind you, we're spending eighty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars of our grant, we're spending eighty thousand dollars of Summit Greenfield's money we're spending, and then we're getting credits for the rest of it. But when I was emailing back and forth, and I had asked via email to actually get the report from the manufacturer to to did the sort of analysis of how far this vehicle can go. My understanding is about seventy-five mile radius on one charge, can go seventy five miles. If you do, for example, ten peak hour trips between here and Chapacua Crossing, it's about seven miles, if I just did a Google map and just like little over seven miles. So morning rush hour, you have the van running, all's great, and then what ends up happening is you need to charge that baby. And in order to be able to complete the evening rush hour, it takes eight hours to charge up for another seventy-five miles. Now Sabrina was talking.
Wait, wait, how'd you get to seventy-five miles though, you said it was seven?
Sabrina, no, but ten times, so you've got every peak.
So.
Wait, it's seven miles from Chapacua.
It's not seven miles from Chapacua.
No, it's, we, we.
It's not seven miles.
Oh, three miles on the map.
All right, Sabrina, do you speak to this?
Yeah, yeah, let, let, because, because.
On Google Maps.
You guys did the research.
Well, and and we took, Halla, your concerns very seriously, I mean, you guys raised some really valid questions. And I shared with you the questions that were asked of the vendor, as well as his responses. He also came and visited us, and we expressed the concern about the charge length. We, he, you know, we, Jennifer and I learned from the discussions with him that our application is actually quite perfect for an electric vehicle. A lot of it will depend on typically, it's not just straight downtime, you, after an eight-hour charge, you get full charge. If you plug in for twenty minutes, you're getting a certain percentage of charge. So we learned, and I particularly learned, that where those charging stations are in relation to a stop are very critical, because while he's waiting for passengers to get on, he can connect and get some charge out of it. They said without charging during the downtime of picking passengers up, there is ample supply. The window of when we would stop our lunch service at two o'clock and begin our train service at four thirty would be enough charge to get us through to when it charges at night. So he, they did this analysis, they looked at downtime and they looked at distance.
Did you say that I, because I. Yeah, it's actually right here, Halla, that number one, this is the memo.
That I prepared.
Yeah, oh, that's true.
And then, actually, Sabrina.
They did, it went out with the packet, I sent it to Jill.
I mean, the memo, the memo talks about all the costs, the training courses, head running.
Although, so, 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 so this, this is a very um, a very um, high-ranking concern of most entities who engage in electric vehicles service, okay?
I mean, that does make a big difference in my mind too, especially because
Absolutely.
I mean, if so, if they're driving, if it's a regular vehicle and they're driving down to the train and then waiting for people to get on, they may be idling, that's a lot of.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, it's also Jennifer sent it to us uh before Friday.
Pollution.
Well, no, Jennifer sent a different memo to us.
Yeah, there were two memos, I prepared one based on the questions that were asked that was circulated last Friday.
This is your, there were. Right, good. So by, but my own concern is that, so let's say everyone's like, oh, we can use this for the senior citizens, well, we really can.
There's, there's no, not to go into the city.
Well, he, there's nothing.
But I like the idea of potentially using it if there are events at Chapacua Crossing and bringing people, having people come down here for dinner.
Well, and. It is within.
We don't have that many restaurants, so having people come down here, and then connect them up there to go to the show, and then come back, and yet I, I do whatever.
So Sabrina, then.
If I may, it is within.
Much, it's still out there.
It is within your purview.
I actually like that idea.
It is within your purview, because in 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 speaking with Ed, we were looking at, well, what is the public use of this? Because that was a big concern, the public use. Chapacua Crossing has an obligation to provide alternative transportation during Monday through Friday. If the town board felt that there was much more value to the community to operate the shuttle on the weekends for Chapacua Crossing for local senior trips, for events between Chapacua and Millwood. You can amend the requirements that Chapacua Crossing has, so that you have availability of this vehicle on the weekends for community needs. Okay, that, all of the Chapacua Crossing requirements are within your control, okay?
Right, and if that's Monday through Friday, it shouldn't be.
Right, and if that's Monday through Friday, it shouldn't be an issue for us to use it on the weekend to take people to the performing arts center.
Well, I just, I want, correct, I wanna just, I just wanna make you aware that you are in control of the outcome of using the vehicle.
I understand this, but I I I really think that a seventy-five mile radius on a single charge is a crippling factor for the utility of this vehicle. And one of the questions that I had asked you, asked you Sabrina, is would a hybrid vehicle qualify for the grant?
The SAB is not in favor of a hybrid and we've already proven that it is sufficient.
I'm actually, excuse me, I I was not asking you the question, I was asking Sabrina the question.
We have been doing, we did research as part of exploring options for hybrid vehicles as part of this. In early discussions with NISERTA representatives, they did not think that there was enough of a greenhouse gas savings from a hybrid. The electric is the the primary fuel in a hybrid vehicle is still a carbon-based fuel. The electric is, you know, it's not as um high ranking in the criteria scoring from NISERTA. Not to say that they would not approve it, but based on input from the SAB and the reality of both to do.
I understand the SAB doesn't have the rolling billboard of electric shuttle. I get it, but.
Well, no, Hala, that's not that's not really fair.
What I'm saying.
Yeah, the difference, Hala, in that document, there is a difference. It tells you exactly the difference in the carbon emissions and all that sort of thing, so.
Carbon emissions, okay. Now, the second question I had is um, I think I've asked like a couple of times.
That's that's your bonus, the carbon emissions.
Uh at various meetings, you may not have been there, but it came up. When you did the clean energies grant, my understanding, the way the grant was written, was that it was the electric shuttle and or the LED lights.
So well, well, let me, it was written and or. We received the contract back from NISERTA and they included both projects. My assistant and I proceeded to have a conversation with our contact at NISERTA or who was in charge of making sure we implemented this grant. And I specifically asked him, if we did not do one project or the other, would we need to change the contract and is that an easy change? He said, yes, you would have to change the contract because the way it is written, it is written for both. If we put all of the money into one project, he said it would go beyond the minor changes that he can make himself and would have to go back to the another division in his office to approve. So it's.
So why wasn't it, but if it's and or, why would it have to happen?
It's not and or.
Because we may have written it and or, but they improved it and.
It is, we wrote it and or, but they improved it and.
They improved it and, exactly.
And why, and why would they, that's, they didn't give us the option, they just decided they go.
They did not give us the option. They sent us the contract with it written the way it was written.
So Sabrina, where are they gonna put this plug downtown by the train station?
We 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 have made no decisions.
We have a plan.
And also they said they need a new one that's it seems that it's, is it a higher?
Oh, might be higher voltage, good point.
Yes, it's yes, it it's a two, it is, I have the phasing of it, yes, I asked, yes, all of these questions.
Yeah.
Level two.
It's not the same what's in there.
It is a different than a passenger car. The batteries in this are different than a passenger car.
So where would it go so that the van could park by the train station?
We, no decisions have been made, we haven't even begun to think of it.
That a taxi van probably do.
We just learned that we we, it it, there's a a relationship between stopping and charging.
It's a big van.
Another thing that I wanted to correct you on was the finances on this based on the quotes we've received. The the six battery shuttle, which is the shuttle that we would need to use given our distances and our route analysis. Is an estimate of two hundred fifty thousand wit dollars, which I think includes two chargers. We will receive a ninety thousand voucher from the state, which will reduce the price of that. The hundred thousand dollars from the grant would leave a balance of sixty thousand dollars, okay? Whether or not that is something that we negotiate with SG on.
Well, we have, they they have to.
Or we do it ourselves, the 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 expenditure is sixty thousand.
No way.
No, 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 she's saying if we, if. We would negotiate with them if we took over their responsibility, we wouldn't be doing it for them for free.
So then they give us the money.
Wait a minute, oh wait a minute, I, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Right, exactly.
For the back.
We're not talking about providing for free.
You are a rear mister.
Okay, okay.
But we have not confirmed Summit Greenfield's willingness to kick in eighty thousand bucks, so we, they are, they're very willing to do this.
They they they. We're not, we're not, we haven't confirmed the exact numbers yet, that still has to be worked out.
Yeah.
And who is driving? Who is paying for the driver?
If if right now Summit Greenfield has an obligation to operate and pay for a shuttle.
We have an obligation, we're ready. And by the way, let me just say one thing, this is not a, I just wanna be clear and I don't mean to be to pick a fight. It's not that it's a, it's not that it's a, it's a driving billboard for sustainability. We s- we agreed that Sustainability Advisory Board, this town board agreed to abide by the Paris Accord agreement. That is more than just words. We have an obligation to reduce our greenhouse emissions. They've, the Sustainability Advisory Board, the reason they don't want the hybrid and the reason they want this electric shuttle is because it can replace two gas-guzzling minibuses. And as far as the LED lights, well, that's a great sustainability effort also, we're doing that anyway. So this, to say, to say let's use it for the lights, that doesn't eliminate the two gas-guzzling minivans. That's why they support it so much.
All I know, and I'm not picking a fight with you either, I just wanna share the facts that as I see them. Is that we have to make scope reductions within the downtown streetscape project in order to make the bond uh price work. And included in that was, you know, we've got light posts that are coming in, they're beautiful, um but are expensive.
Sure.
And right now, let me finish and 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 what we're doing is, I get, it's great to have a shuttle to go up to on Saturdays, to go up to
So Hala, just like we know.
uh Chapacua Crossing, so on and so forth, not against that idea, but we in essence are, you know, while Summit Greenfield has to pay eighty thousand dollars, we are underwriting something that is almost eighty percent to the benefit of the tenants of Chapacua Crossing. Whereas the LED lights would benefit every single solitary resident who has to pay taxes because it's gonna reduce the electric expense.
We're still talking about it, right?
And my feeling is, is that if what we wanted to do, and I do like your idea about making the connection and sort of bringing people back and forth. Is we are making a two, let's call the number what it is, it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment regardless of how it's paid for in something that we're not even sure there's gonna be high demand for. So if we wanted to experiment with renting an electric shuttle or renting a bus that or a shuttle that would go from downtown to Chapacua Crossing at various times, whether it's lunchtime, whether it's during a performance time to relieve some of the pressure there. I think that as an experiment to as proof of concept, as proof of demand, would be well worth it. But right now, this is not.
And let me, let me take follow up with that thought, Nick, and if you can just listen to some of the things I'm gonna bring up. Um just from a personal perspective, you know, I'm I'm a little chafed that, if that's a proper term. That not only do we have this new development, but while I may have to have pay a cab to pick me up because I'm short a car to get to the train station or cab to take me home because I'm short a car. Um or someone may have to have a third car to commute to get to the train station or a second car to commute because they, whatever, you know, whatever I be, one or two or three cars in the family. Um we are basically underwriting a private benefit to residents of the new shiny new toy up at Chapco Crossing to get to commute to the train, dropped off right up the front. That doesn't work for me, it doesn't work for someone on the other side of town, it doesn't work for anyone, but they get that benefit. We are going to be an underwrite because it's not gonna just be Summit Greenfield, it's gonna be coming from us in our dollars. Um and I'm not convinced it's going to be something that's always utilized. That if I wanna go to lunch downtown in Newcastle and and this is sort of puts me to quandary because I want business to come downtown, so it does. It's it's kinda like damned if you, damned if you don't, but assuming that it works, I have to find parking, but no. I'm gonna underwrite that person up in Chapco Crossing to come downtown.
See, I don't think that way.
Um I see that, I I see it that way, very much so. Um whereas to Hala's point, the LEDs were something that the SAB already approved, that we're kinda getting off my issue with you or question to you. And are certainly are are consistent with the Paris Accord, consistent with what the SAB wants because that was another idea and that could potentially free up money that we could use for other.
For other things.
Other things downtown.
Like put the benches back.
Because then we would have to take a hundred thousand dollars for our, from our coffers or for to 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 get them all with the bond to put, invest in our downtown, to invest in our hamlet of Chapacua. Why and how if we can't give a private person or private entity a benefit? How can I then take money that's uh from town dollars, whether we get it from a grant or not, to use to a private benefit just those great fortunate people at Chapco Crossing?
See, I feel like that's a cynical way of looking at it. The point of it was not necessarily to benefit those people, it was really to protect the downtown.
As I understood it.
But hold on, I'm trying to make answer to the question.
I know, it was.
And to make merchants, to make shopping up there connected to here.
But you're still giving a bus regardless, you're still giving a bus regardless in here.
That they're gonna get that benefit because they're gonna provide that anyways. This this bus is not any incremental protection.
You're right, but you're still giving a bus regardless of matter what. Regardless of what.
They already by contract need to provide that bus, it's whether it's a green bus or.
So. Right, so.
Correct.
Well, we can use it for other.
Yeah, which is very significant.
But we can't fundamentally because of the limitations, the range limitations.
We can use it there.
So like, is it that's that's.
No, exactly, you you can, you can use it.
Okay, we can use it. I mean, there are a lot of seniors, but there are a lot of seniors who go to those shows, for instance, let's just say.
I have, I have my question, you have, you got my question?
Right.
And they're not so comfortable driving, some of them, it's dark, we don't have street lighting throughout the whole town and.
Well, we could get some streetlights with that money.
And to be able to go from the senior center and take people up to see a show and come back, I see that as a huge benefit.
Point, thank you.
And if it drives to the senior center, they're gonna park there and not just drop the shuttle.
So you let me answer, let me answer Jeremy's question. Jeremy's question summarizes, is it a gift of public funds, which we said you can't use? Um to if the funds are going to be used for the um to fund the developer's obligation with the shuttle. So the answer to that question is yes, unless it's, there's a public purpose there. So if you're using it for the senior center, if you're using it for non-SG related obligations, then you have a business decision to make as to whether you think that's a sufficient public purpose. Could it be five percent or ten percent?
But if they pay their portion.
It's.
I mean, so ten, let's say ten percent of this benefit of my tax dollars and your tax dollars and our collective tax dollars is being used to benefit a private, private individuals, is that sufficient?
There's no gray, it it's a gray area, so it's no.
But wait, I mean, I have this question.
But clearly it's up to this board to.
Wait, wait, but let me ask you a question related to that. Let's just say we've determined that Summit Greenfield's obligation to provide their van is worth would cost them eighty thousand dollars or whatever it's gonna be.
Right.
Like forty thousand.
Okay, forty, whatever it is, if we're having them, because they have to buy it and and staff it.
Well, they would do little jitney.
Staff it.
So if they take that money and then put it into either this electric vehicle or they don't and they give us the money, how is that then using public funds for a private purpose if they're, if we're not, they're still responsible for their financial obligation in the first place?
Because then the town bus is being used for, still even though they're contributing to it, you have a public-private partnership in that sense. You still have a public bus that is being used for a private purpose during times that it might be able to be used.
Argue, what if nobody from the condos ever used that bus? What if it was people who went downtown and wanted to get Starbucks and then wanted to go to the gym? Or wanted to go have lunch and then go up to the physical therapy appointment or whatever it is?
I don't think that matters because you're using the bus to satisfy their obligation regardless of a ridership.
Even if they're spending the money to satisfy their obligation.
Regardless. They are.
So we're using the incremental difference.
Right, but he's saying it's okay, it's a public. It's a public purpose, like you say, it's a good, it's okay.
Right, it's, correct, it's it's, look, as long as it's a public purpose, that's up to this board to determine, is it enough of a public purpose?
All I know is that my unfortunate, this may be just one of those weird cuss because we, electric bus idea, of course, is a wonderful idea, nobody's.
Trolley.
And gets that idea. But I think what we are is we're at a point where battery technology for this type of purpose hasn't evolved and I think when we were talking to some of the other towns about how they applied electric buses. Very often they had multi fleet, multi-vehicle fleet so that there would never be a downtime. So one, you know, one could be charged, so they had the opportunity to allow for any sort of full restoration or anything.
So I think you will find that there's some information in that document that will put those concerns at rest. Um the, so it seems to me that there are two or three different things here that we wanna speak to. Um one is the technical ability of the van to meet our needs. And I believe that there is information in that document that
Yes, sir, you did address that.
that will say, yes, it does. Um the second thing is, will people use it, right? Which is.
Would, by the way, the second thing sort of conflicts with the first thing, right? On the one hand, we're saying it's charged, not gonna be enough for the use, and the other hand, we're saying nobody's gonna use it, so it's.
Well, but it's, I mean, it's a legitimate question, it's no question, no, but there there should be somewhere.
We're saying, we're saying, yeah, yeah, go ahead, I wanna hear you.
You know, there are gonna be a hundred and fifty-five, I think, units of housing, so let's guess that maybe there's somewhere between two and three hundred adults that will be living up there. Never mind, you know, maybe high school students or whatever. Um you can't get a parking spot now at the train station, so I I think the likelihood, um I think the the idea that nobody will use it, and particularly from up there is.
I think there's no, no, no doubt, no, there's no doubt in my mind.
I know, I mean, I can understand maybe not so much what you're hearing, yes.
What happened after three years?
Use of, especially of the senior population from up there to have the train station.
That it's solely a talent to provide the service?
No, no, there's no obligation for private services.
Absolutely, every jitney I've ever seen from every townhome development on any train station.
So what we do with, what we do with, this is, you just make the money on the salary.
But can I speak to the town, let me do it.
That's the problem, but 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 there's one other point I wanna raise is that
That's. That's wrong.
you still need to, this board still has to approve any agreement with Summit Greenfield as to how those costs would be shared for insurance, for the operation, for the driver, for the maintenance. None of that's being discussed and that's still to be resolved.
So we're putting, we're putting the car before the electric horse.
No, we're not, but we have to prove the uh.
Yeah, but but here's, but here's, let me, can I, can I clarify something?
We have the grant. We have the, we have to get, we have to get the grant.
Summit Greenfield's obligation is to operate the shuttle from when the C of O's certificates of occupancies for the units in the Kupula building are issued until, and then they have an opportunity to reevaluate ridership after two years of full tenancy of the townhouses of the East Village.
After two years.
Right. Looks like five years.
It's a long time, okay?
Right.
To establish that. They haven't even gotten off go as far as design of the East Village, just to give you a sense of timing. So I don't, and and their first recourse isn't to discontinue it, it's to reevaluate it to see where they are with ridership and discuss it with the town.
Yeah, and listen, this is.
And then can the town say, well, you gotta continue operating?
The town absolutely can.
Let's be intellectually honest here, let's be intellectually honest here, once Summit Greenfield or any developer, I shouldn't pick on Summit Greenfield, gets what they want. It doesn't behoove them to spend more money for the town. So once they get what they want, meaning this is developed, they're done, they're not gonna wanna in perpetuity or for five more years operate something they don't need to operate.
But it sounds like they don't get to unilaterally decide that.
No, no, because it would add value to the townhomes if it had amenities.
It's a sort of, it's a sort of sold out.
It'll come with the maintenance of the townhouse.
But as I understand it, SG is not paid for, it's being paid for through the common charges, if you will.
Yeah, the common charges of the townhomes, yeah.
Right.
So I just wanna.
To and to the commercial one, and and and.
And I really, and I really have no doubt about the, particularly the use of people up there coming to the train station. There's no doubt in my mind that that will be a heavily used service. It's more.
So there's just one more piece then that just talking about that in terms of using the money for the lights. So um the light, lighting project obviously is a huge project. The bulk of the cost of that project is the decorative fixtures, not the actual lamps. And as I understand it, and I'm looking at Sabrina to see if I'm correct. Because of the very strict rules about this grant, as it must be about energy reduction. Only the cost of the lamps would be.
Like the light bulbs, you mean.
Not, not the, the the actual bulbs, not, not the poles, anything else would apply.
The bulbs, the light, not the.
Or connecting those bulbs.
Because the poles don't help us save energy.
And we have money in our lighting district for those bulbs, which is letting part of the streetscape. We have money in the lighting district for the bulbs, which is separate from the streetscape.
Then why was this project even recommended if you're telling me this is a bogus project? You're telling me the LED lighting, can't, we can't spend a hundred thousand dollars on it?
It's not a bogus project.
On on the bulbs.
Believe me, the the present, we can spend a hundred thousand dollars on the lighting project.
No.
Okay.
Okay? The lighting project is closer to one million dollars.
No, 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 but be clear, you're talking about around the entire, not the streetscape.
You're talking.
No, I'm talking about the streetscape. If you think about the connections of, these are not replacement light bulbs. These are new light bulbs.
Right, but you're saying you can't use it for that replacement light bulb.
Well, I I'm saying, I am saying that the contract right now specify, does not specify just the light bulbs. The contract specifies more than that, that we describe more than the the light bulbs.
Right, but if they never approve.
If we reduce this project to only focusing on that, they're going to want a breakdown, more breakdown, more detail. I don't know if we will get more than that.
Well, that's the, that's the real point, is we, what we don't know is if we would even get the money if we went back to them and said.
I'm confused, why, if we wrote it in a certain way, I I'd like to hear specifically from them, why did they then decide on their own?
Never mind.
The state say no, we're not approving the shuttle, I'm confused. If we said and or.
They're not only approving the shuttle, they approve the shuttle adding the lights.
So then, so then we can allocate the dollars, so then we can allocate the money to the.
And we need to get the contract changed.
But they said the shuttle is a priority.
But that's, but we, we could, we could.
But I don't care, it's a priority.
We need to get the contract changed.
We could go back to them and say that in essence, this does not benefit enough of the community, but this.
We could, but so. We may not want to. Because we could get rid of two gas-guzzling shuttle buses.
And we have, so we could go back to them, why are they? Right, but we have no way of knowing if they actually do the grant and then I think that's risking the hundred thousand dollars.
I I just feel like it is gonna be a.
What we don't wanna do is lose track.
And we have another, I mean, the thing that costs two sixty is not accurate, we have a hundred thousand, we have another ninety thousand dollar grant, this is not costing us two sixty.
I mean, look.
Well, if you determine, if you, let me throw this out here because I understand the discussion over the Summit Greenfield relationship. In looking at the cost of the vehicle, the balance before you even begin to coordinate with Summit Greenfield is sixty thousand dollars. If and if we had another electric shuttle, the question is what it would be used for. It could not go to New York City. It could not go to New York City. We wouldn't put our seniors on an electric shuttle to go to New York City. They get a coach bus with a bathroom. However, if you wanted to create a connection between Chapua and Millwood, service the Performing Arts Center, you know, there are a lot of uses that we could create a public service using an electric shuttle.
What I'm saying is, as long as it's being used to satisfy the condition of Summit Greenfield, that vehicle's use is so intensive.
What I'm saying, we would not, we wouldn't, I am saying, tell you, we would not.
So we wanna do the electric shuttle and say, you know what, Summit Greenfield, you go ahead and get your two little jitneys. We're gonna go buy an electric shuttle, the electric shuttle.
Yeah. It would cost you sixty K.
It will cost us sixty K, so that's a decision we can make. So to me, kind of, you're.
So, so you're issued.
Not saving the noise, the pollution, and the, and the, and the.
Right, I mean, that's.
But, but you have to understand, as it stands right now, it is a very small subset
That's the whole point.
of the population that's gonna be receiving the maximum benefit, whereas if it's going, the hundred thousand dollars goes to underwrite the LED lights in town, everybody who touches the hamlet will have that financial benefit and it will release tons for other items.
Except, Hala, look at it one other way though. Hala, look at it one other way though. One of the things we're concerned about too is, which I see already, is the amount of traffic that's coming out of Chapel Crossing.
I agree.
Like, now that it's being utilized more, it's a nightmare over there already.
I agree. I agree.
So even though it's one shuttle, right, let's just say one shuttle, how many people does it hold?
Twenty-four.
Twenty, twenty-four, about twenty-four people.
Twenty-four people, so let's just say one person's commuting, that's twenty-four cars, however many times a day, that it's not going to, we're not gonna have to have on that road, which is a huge deal, and to me, that's actually a public benefit.
But what I'm talking about. Okay, so let me, can I, can I address that specific concern because I, I hear what you're saying?
What about the environmental?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, it would be one thing if they didn't already have to provide a jitney. So the fact of the matter is, what we're talking about is incrementality. So as it stands right now, they can't need to provide a jitney in all of the maximum peak hours going back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
And so really, what is the incremental traffic that we're saving?
And we can, that incrementality is zero. But if right now.
So what we're really saving is we're.
Well, we're saving is the environment and they're still paying us for it.
I know, but we're. We're saving, what we're saving is twelve to fourteen round trips from Chapel Crossing uh, with a jitney, twelve times to fourteen times a day.
Well, here, here's the thing, our sustainability advisory board.
That's what we're saying.
Seems to, our sustainability advisory board seems to.
I appreciate their point of view.
Ah, good. So they seem to think that the environmental impact is, is worth it to do it, and I agree with them. And that's something that is just not getting enough play in this conversation. I'm gonna respond to the ERB thinks that they. We're taking off two gas guzzling.
No, right, ERB.
It's too important not to take down, to play devil's advocate here, and they're not getting the play that they want, so I, I think, I just sit on you as well. Oh, the hill serves as, the hill serves, the hill serves as a buffer, it does not increase, it does not increase carbon monoxide into the atmosphere. But the point, but that's our subjective opinion, bro. But, but we think trees are removed. And we can make a better, we can make a better, we can make a better buffer with more trees. I think that's a, I just a point I'm trying to make.
Alright, guys, one top at a time.
I'm focusing on the environment.
One top at a time, thank you.
Listen, we have, we have to, we have to, we're trying to, we, if we're starting down to the Paris Accord, which is to reduce the greenhouse emissions, then we have to take steps to do that. It's not just lip service. This is a way to greatly reduce greenhouse emissions. We're already doing the lights, we can remove one and possibly two gas guzzling shuttle buses, not to mention less car trips going back and forth between our two business hamlets. That's why the SAB is strongly recommending it, and that is not something that should be overlooked lightly. It's about the environment, that they got us this grant because of their environmental initiatives. This grant has to be used for environmental initiatives, that's why they're recommending this.
We're all right there behind it, and if I remember correctly, it was Jeremy and I who were at the Lula training that learned about this grant, and Jeremy emailed everyone because we knew that because of the hard work of the sustainability advisory board, we were two, two programs short. And then Sabrina stepped up to the plate to make sure that we would be the first town to actually get it. So I actually view this as a very good collective effort, and I do appreciate a lot of the advice, whether it's plastic bags or something, whether it's gardening, whether it's so and so forth. I think a lot of them, well, sometimes a little bit uncomfortable, like you're changing behaviors, this one sort of falls out, for me personally, this one sort of falls out of the realm of practicality. And whether it's a little too soon, a little too late, and I really feel to a certain extent that you're subsidizing Summit Greenfield and what, and we're hurting the majority of the residents of town who could actually see the benefit of a hundred thousand dollar savings on the streetscape project. So some of that money could be redeployed to things they touch and see every day.
Okay. Alright, I think we're, we're going over the same arguments.
Yeah, I, I, there's, I mean, there really isn't anything that I can say except, um, I mean, when, when, when Jennifer, Sabrina, when Jennifer and I spoke about this, she was under the impression that it would only be the cost of the actual lamps that would be, because that's the only part that's actually carving the deficit.
Yeah, and we, we, and.
That that would be the only thing that would be acceptable. We have no idea whether we can go back to New York State and say, we want to do the lamps and not the shuttle.
Why, why would they, why would they include the lights?
I think that's, I think that's a risk that, you know, if you wanna take, I think it's possible that we would lose the money.
Or I think that we should be having a conversation, that, it's, either there is no, or we should be having the conversation, do we wanna, we only have sixty thousand bucks
Definitely, so, so.
Okay. We, we are, we're gonna have the conversation, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on this tonight.
And have an electric shuttle for. For.
It's on the agenda. We're having a conversation, we had the conversation, and now we're gonna vote on it, okay?
What are we voting on? We're voting on whether or not to move forward with the electrical shuttle, even though we don't know, we don't have, what, with the buying it?
So, so Hala, so vote against it, then.
So let's make sure, I, I am, so make sure, I wanna make sure everybody knows what we're voting on. We're voting on going and spending two hundred fifty thousand dollars on the electric shuttle, applying a one hundred.
Not, not one penny of taxpayer money, though, let's make sure.
Hold on, it's all taxpayer money.
Okay, forget about the grants, forget about the grants, okay.
Two, let me finish, may I finish? Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on electric shuttle, which will be paid for by a one hundred thousand clean energy grant that the community was given to improve the environment.
Thank you to the SAB.
It will be, it will be included in that, and we'd get ninety thousand dollars of state credit for the purchase, with a voucher.
A voucher.
And there is a balance remaining, which is sixty thousand dollars. The town at this point has no formal arrangement with Summit Greenfield
So this doesn't authorize the purchase of it.
to go ahead. Right, to go ahead and, um, strike a deal. We don't know if Summit Greenfield's kicking in twenty thousand dollars, we don't know if they're kicking in forty thousand dollars, we don't know if they're kicking in more. We don't know how the insurance is gonna be handled, so this is a big vacuum of knowledge.
Okay. Right.
So instead of going back and actually seeing what they're willing to contribute, so that we're not left with a net loss.
Okay.
Have you talked to Summit Greenfield?
Well, this is, but this is not authorizing the purchase of it. Yes, we have. This is authorizing the town board to have the staff modify the CDC grant so that it can be used, so we get the state's consent.
Blessing on one part.
Blessing, and directing town staff to identify that if the purchase of the shuttle.
And, and would we, and we at the same time be able to add to the resolution to basically see if LED lighting would work to satisfy the grant?
It's up to you guys.
I'm not interested in the LED lighting.
So, so hang on, in that.
Here's the thing, if right now we were talking.
Let me just one quick question. In the timeframe of from what Nick just said, what we're authorizing, in that period where we might potentially purchase it, can we commit to talk to Summit Greenfield to get their commitment before we actually purchase it, and then we'll, then we'll know how much they're contributing to?
And if they say. If they say thirty.
So folks, let me, let's do a reality check here, okay? I need direction from you as to which project you wanna move forward with. Right now, your contract says you will do both, okay? If we do one, if we do the electric vehicle, there's not enough money to do the lights. If we do the lights, we're uncertain as to whether or not we have enough money to go towards the electric vehicle, okay? My, myself and my office have done as much exploration along with the SAB to date that we can do without getting direction from your board. Part of that direction, we see you have some very good questions, part of that direction is, last one thought, is Summit Greenfield, okay? Last time I met, I met with you in June, and everybody wanted to coordinate on this electric vehicle and do, or the lighting, and yes, talk to Summit Greenfield. I started conversations with Summit Greenfield. I have gone as far as I can go at my level without getting some support from the town board as to how much you want to pressure Summit Greenfield to pay past their thirty-five thousand dollars that they were gonna refurbish an old Reader's Digest van to transport people.
That, that does, first of all, it doesn't count, it doesn't count the cost of the driver, it doesn't count the cost of the gas, it doesn't count the cost of the煤.
Uh, wait, wait, wait. Right, I mean, so, so I, I am at a point right now where I need some direction from you, and, and for me, it's either way. I love the idea of an electric bus. I'm not concerned about ridership. I'm gonna ride that bus every day because I think it's a great idea. Hopefully, it will be ridden and it won't go to waste two years from tenancy of the, of the townhomes, but that's not my point. I need some direction from you as to how to move forward.
Let me read, let me just.
Wait, I just have one more question, wait, one quick, quick question.
Good.
So in order to not have to amend the grant application, we need to use it for both?
Yes.
Is, does it say, if we use it for the vehicle, does it specify how many light bulbs we have to purchase?
There are, well, there's percentages of the money.
Like if we purchased ten light bulbs, is that enough?
There are percentages of the money that say we need to spend, you know, percent-wise towards lighting, percent, well, there are benchmarks
Mm-hmm.
of what we need to do to achieve that.
Could you share the, could you share the contract?
And how low can the lighting benchmark be without?
It was, I believe it was shared with the Eagle.
Could I see it?
It, it is draft, if, if, you guys wanna see it, I'll share it with, but the.
I'd like to see one each other.
But, but this resolution is low.
But how, how low does the light bulb percentage go with guy who made ministerial changes before we have to?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Right.
I don't know off the top of my head. Right now, the contract is draft and changes need to be made to the contract, you know, wordsmithing changes, phrases, that type of thing.
That can you send it to?
We are talking about much larger changes in regards to project identification and percentages at this point. And I would need to go back and examine what's.
It's a percentage.
Because I would think that they would think that an electric vehicle might be better than LED light bulbs.
I can tell you, the electric vehicle scored much higher in an Iserda's criteria than LED lighting.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
So I would think they'd be more likely to approve or using a hundred percent, let's just say, toward the electric vehicle versus a hundred percent toward lighting.
Right.
I do not think that would be a problem.
That's the other way around.
It's the other, I do not think that that would be a problem because of the greenhouse gas emission savings of an electric vehicle, the whole idea of alternative transportation, if you look at the benchmarks that an electric, or that an electric shuttle hits as opposed to a carbon shuttle, okay, from an environmental perspective. The question really becomes if we choose not to do that and we are just doing the LED lights, do, you know, are, is Iserda still as comfortable with the project that we selected? Or are they gonna say you need to come up with an alternative?
Right.
Listen, I'm gonna read to you what the Sustainability Advisory Board said, a couple of sentences. Newcastle Sustainability Advisory Board strongly supports the purchase of an electric shuttle for the town using a hundred thousand clean energy community grant from Iserda. Okay, we believe it's in the town's best interest, and the Sustainability Advisory Board would find it very disappointing if the town board rejected the electric shuttle, since it provides significant benefits for the community and showcase Newcastle's commitment to sustainability. That's all I need to hear.
Certainly showcases.
I mean, another thing that I saw of life is.
Yeah, showcases it and saves greenhouse gases.
For better or for worse, we're gonna have an affordable housing project unit right here by the train station. And we have a chapel crossing, so to be able to connect those two areas for people who potentially don't have cars.
Which is consistent with the conflict, that's part of the conflict heads of plan.
I, I don't like that.
We're going to have that anyways, that's what I'm saying, it's.
I think all of us are circling, I mean, I think, we have many opinions, and it's all made our opinions clear.
No, I know, I think it's.
Right.
With less greenhouse emissions, which is the goal of the. I don't know, if I said one thing, I convinced you?
We're gonna have that, that connectivity component of the equation for like a rubric.
No. Alright, so I think of all, I think of all. But with less gas house emissions, which is why we're getting the grant and why the SAB supports it, is the gas house emissions.
I don't know about what that factor is.
So what you're gonna say. Yeah. The picture on the side.
Hmm.
Alright, we have, we have a resolution. I think of all, I think, I think we, let's, yeah, let's, let's move forward. Let's, let's vote on the resolution since we just voted about this.
Other votes come. Do we have anything else to talk about?
SBCA letter of support?
Chill your back up. I thought we do, we did the other resolution.
We did, no, it's not.
No, we didn't. Yeah, we have to vote.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we done, are you doing?
I mean, do you have something to say?
Yes, we're onto the next thing.
I was just gonna say that people should read the resolution because clearly there isn't understanding about what it is that you're doing.
We write it, within the packet.
Okay.
So.
Okay, next thing, we have the SBCA letter of support.
SBCA?
But I'm sorry.
So, um. Okay, sorry, SBCA, um.
Wait, we skipped the train station gutter replacement.
Here, chill right here, right here.
Oh, okay, thank you, okay.
There's the SBCA.
Uh, yeah, the gutter replacement, so, um, they would, uh, they got three grants to go out, three grants.
Three bids.
Three bids to go out for the gutter replacement. We realized that, um, we had done everything except to ask the board for permission to go out to, um, to actually go out and approve the lowest response.
They're not even that old in the conference at present.
Yeah.
It should last forever.
It's disappointing, okay, so.
Twenty-three thousand four hundred.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a resolution. Thank you, are we have a, responding resolution, okay.
Yeah.
Um, next thing is the SBCA, uh, from Westchester, they, uh, wanted, um, um, a letter of support um, in connection with their, um, their campaign to build a new state art animal care campus. So they're asking for a grant and they'd like us as one of their municipal partners to, uh, to write a letter of support.
This is the one by lump fee?
Yeah, absolutely.
They've been trying this for this for years.
False alarm.
And the false alarm fee, eh, false alarm appeal, so, um, we, uh, we have an appeal from, um, a resident regarding, um, a, uh, false alarm fee. Um, the resident is taking issue with it. Evidently, there was a defect from ADT regarding a smoke and heat defect, uh, smoke and heat alarm. So this is different, so our regular, um, burglar alarms, they don't get charged on the first one. When it's a fire and smoke alarm, they do, because the fire department comes out and everything else, and they really wanna try to, just.
Sure, it's. Take our process, yeah.
And volunteers.
Um, so he's contesting the false alarm fee, um, he's not contesting that there was in fact a false alarm, he has a letter from ADT stating that there was a.
Shouldn't they be trying to collect the fee from ADT? Why is that our issue?
Plus, it's, yes, they're in charge of maintaining the system, I mean, no way, and, I mean, these firefighters have to come out and do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
They should get a credit from ADT.
Well, so the procedure is that you are the, the town board is the Alarm Appeals Board, section thirty-eight dash twenty-three.
Congratulations.
You need to, you need to schedule a hearing, give them fifteen days' notice, they have an opportunity to be heard and present their argument before you, so let's just go ahead and schedule it. Okay, so let's do it.
Well, can we also contact them and let them know that we would be happy to send a letter to them indicating that this is the town's schedule and that, you know, you should feel free to collect this money from ADT, because I'm sure if, if ADT has installed faulty equipment.
Well, they're gonna, you're gonna send it down for a hearing, then it comes to be here, we can tell them in person.
We have to do a hearing anyway.
Yes.
So we can tell them in person.
But I'm happy to have a conversation.
But I'm happy to have a conversation.
Yeah, I just figured that's.
I'm not, I'm not inclined, I'm not inclined to make ADT's, ADP's problem, ADT's problem our problem.
Correct.
I agree.
It's not sin callous, but they should work with ADT, so this is costing money.
Right. Well, I didn't think we were even allowed to do that. Wouldn't. I, I thought, we've had other issues like with water where we said like, I'm sorry, we can't.
Well, that's. Well, you'd have to go through.
Make that change, or with taxes, we can't waive fees, things like that.
Right, so this would be the same thing, so the bottom line is, is that, well.
Well, it's a loser, because there's a statute, there's a provision in paragraph C that gives you that authority to waive those fees upon a, making a certain determination. So it is different, you have the authority, you just need to be convinced that it's in the interest of justice requires it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, we, we, we can.
Okay.
But again, you have to hear it, so please don't form any opinions until you've heard from them.
We have to hear it, so I'll make an opinion until we hear them.
Well, of course, but, uh, I understand that.
So, we have to notice.
This is not in keeping with the world-class service ADT strives to provide. World-class, that's, that's.
They, they should make check along the dollar.
It's world-class.
That's very, that's a very high bar, world-class.
They should have stolen.
I think it's, I think it's here for Joe to reach out to, tell me here, the SPCA, they should reach out to ADT and request reimbursement directive because that's.
It's fifty dollars, it's a T-type problem.
Now, that would be world-class service.
Right.
And then they can withdraw it and we don't have to have a public hearing.
Right, right, right.
Okay, and I'm happy to fill that, uh, okay, let's move on to.
Administrative items.
So this thing, you came into place, we're gonna have that partnership safety agreements, partnership safety, other people that do our random drug testing. Also, they do the physicals and our, um, CDL license exams. And then we've got, uh, two thousand eighteen rates for MVP and NEPCO, which are health insurance plans.
Okay.
All right, and then we're ready to start our resolutions?
Okay.
Okay, I move to adopt a local law, Newcastle NEPCO, amending chapter forty-eight, the town code concerning building permit applications and time limitations.
So.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I move to authorize the town of Newcastle to enter into an agreement with the village town of Mount Kisco Northern Fire Protection District to furnish fire protection to the Northern Fire Protection District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt the following resolution related to adopting a secret determination of significance for Newcastle DPW gasoline diesel beating oil tank removal and replacement.
Can we just go to the end of the?
Now, therefore, be resolved that after taking a hard look at the full environmental assessment form and all associated material prepared in connection with the proposed action, including written materials and reports from town staff, the board hereby adopts the attached negative declaration regarding the proposed action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, um, the next one, I added a number four for the basketball super determination, I added a paragraph at the end of the board of resolve that reads, whereas the description of the project sets forth the EAF, including part three, which is the declarations, sets forth the greatest potential impacts and the town board has not made a decision as to the final scope of the project and it continues to explore if potential impacts can be reduced.
Okay.
Everyone up to that language?
Yep, sounds good.
So we need a motion and a.
So.
Motion?
No, no, there should be a resolved.
Now, therefore, be adopted.
Right, 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 right.
As amended.
Amended by, uh, council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that okay?
Yes, now, for the next ones, these are your bond resolutions. The bond resolutions are set forth in your.
Looks like Lisa's.
The bond resolutions are.
Adams.
This is, yeah.
I'm trying to make it easy for votes, the bond resolutions are set forth in a packet, you have ten of them.
Yes.
They've been part of a public packet, you've had an opportunity to read them, you don't need to read the entire resolution, some of the bonds are set forth.
That's good.
Should we just read that, should we just read the number?
Just read, just read the block, the cap, the title.
So, resolution authorizing the issuance of three million six forty-three sixty-one serial bonds of the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York to pay the cost of the increase in improvements of the facilities of Newcastle Stanwood Ward District and the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York.
Second.
No, 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 no.
Hold, hold.
Roll call.
Don't we have to second it anyway?
Right, you do, yes.
Yeah.
So I second it.
Are you ready? All right.
Are you ready?
You ready, are you ready to vote?
Yes, I am, this is a roll call vote. Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Yay.
Deputy Supervisor Brasky, how do you vote?
Over here, yeah?
Well, well, all Jewish guys, we're chatting.
Over here.
You're changing one. You're not pulled, you're there.
It's okay. Yeah, yeah, he's not pulled. He's got a full layer here.
Joe, we're gonna vote over votes.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Councilmember Slant, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Katz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember McCosky, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. All right, motion passes. A resolution authorizing the issuance of one million eight thirty-nine-two oh six serial bonds of the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York to pay the cost of the increase and improvement of the facilities of the sewer district number one in the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York.
Second.
Hit it.
This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Yay.
Deputy Supervisor Brasky.
Yay.
Councilmember Slant, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, yay.
I'm an aye.
I'm aye.
I think it would aye in the future.
Aye.
Councilmember McCosky.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. A resolution authorizing downtown area drainage improvements in and for the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York at a maximum cost of two million eight sixty-eight-three forty-nine, authorizing subject to permissive referendum, the issuance of two million five sixty-three forty-nine bonds of said town to pay the cost thereof.
Second.
This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor Brasky, councilmember Slant?
Aye.
Yeah.
I knew you could do that, so protectable.
Councilmember Katz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember.
Totally aye, totally aye.
Motion is Carrie.
A resolution authorizing downtown area streetscape improvements in and for the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York at a maximum estimated cost of three million two hundred nine one five, authorizing subject to per- permissive referendum, the issuance of two million eight fifty-five-nine fifteen of bonds of said town to pay the cost thereof.
Second. This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor.
Aye.
Councilmember Slant?
Aye.
Councilmember Katz?
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Who's Carrie?
A resolution authorizing downtown area road improvements in and for the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York at a maximum estimated cost of three million two thirty-one-two fifty-nine, authorizing said, subject to permissive referendum, the issuance of two million eight eight four two five one bonds of said town to pay the cost thereof.
Second.
This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor Brasky.
Aye.
Councilmember Slant?
Aye.
Councilmember Katz?
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Motion passes. A resolution authorizing financing for the purchase of a heavy equipment, of heavy equipment for the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York at a maximum estimated cost of one million four sixty-nine-eight oh three point six nine, authorizing subject to permissive referendum, the issuance of one million four sixty-nine-eight oh three point sixty-nine bonds of said town.
Second.
Permissive apparatus?
Apparatus, yeah, that's a good word.
This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor Brasky.
Aye.
Councilmember Slant?
Aye.
Councilmember Katz?
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Motion passes. A resolution authorizing the replacement of fuel tanks at the DPW facility with above-ground tanks in and for the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred thousand dollars, authorizing subject to permissive referendum, the issuance of five hundred thousand dollar bonds of said town to pay the cost thereof.
Second.
This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor Brasky.
Aye.
Councilmember Slant?
Aye.
Councilmember Katz?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. A resolution authorizing financing of improvements to Getney Park Playground in and for the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York at a maximum estimated cost of one forty-three-eight ninety-five, authorizing subject to permissive referendum and the issuance of one forty-three-eight ninety-five bonds of said town.
Second.
This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor Brasky.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Katz?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. A resolution authorizing improvements at the Chapel Cross Performing Arts Center in and for the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York at a maximum estimated cost of one hundred fifty thousand dollars, authorizing subject to permissive referendum, the issuance of one hundred fifty thousand dollars of bonds of said town to pay the cost thereof.
Second.
This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Slant?
Aye.
Councilmember Katz?
Aye.
Councilmember Katz?
Aye.
Motion passes. A resolution authorizing the upgrade replacement of its infrastructure in and for the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York at a maximum estimated cost of seven eighty-eight-three fifty, and authorizing the issuance of seven eighty-eight-three fifty of bonds of said town to pay the cost thereof.
Second.
This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor Brasky, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Slant, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Katz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember McCosky, how do you vote?
Aye.
I like the roll calls. Okay.
You make a mistake.
Are we good? We're good, okay.
You wanna tack something on?
I don't think we're doing the CSEA one, uh.
No, I'm not.
No, we're not doing that.
What about sixteen, about the other one?
Okay, uh.
No, 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 CSEA is group changes, one thing has something to do with it.
We're skipping. Oh, okay, right, I move to approve the following resolution to upgrade five CSEA positions as indicated, uh, in the attached resolution, these.
Wait, 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 no, 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 I'm sorry, it's not five, it's two positions.
Oh, yeah, two positions, as indicated below, uh, senior office assistant recreation from six to seven, senior office assistant police from six to seven. These changes are made pursuant to article, I don't know what that is, nineteen?
No, nineteen, sorry.
Subsection B of the CSEA Local One Thousand AFSC and E contract with the town of Newcastle. The town has complied with the notice requirements of such article.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to adopt the following resolution authorizing the purchase of a two thousand eighteen Ford F-three fifty. Uh, the town board authorizes the town to piggyback off of Anandaga County's bid award and upon review of the attached documents, including Van Bordel Ford's big documents and agreement with the county of Anandaga awards to Van Bordel Ford, the contract for the purchase of one twenty-eighteen Ford F-three fifty under Anandaga County bid reference number seven nine seven four, in the sum not to exceed the contract price of fifty thousand dollars. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's so funny.
I move, uh, accept the retirement of Police Detective Sergeant Karen Murray effective December twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen. Um, we thank Detective Sergeant Murray for his dedication and service to residents of Newcastle and on a personal note, he's a gentleman and I personally wish him all the best.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have that?
I move to accept the retirement of Police Officer Senator Ward, Officer Ward's retirement is effective, uh, December twentieth, two thousand seventeen. We thank Officer Ward for his dedication and service to the residents of Newcastle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that a gentleman?
Nah, he's not. I don't know if he personally saw that.
Sure is a gentleman.
Uh, I move to appoint Nazim Al-Din Whipper, who seems to be a gentleman, we met him. To the position of fourth grade police officer with the town Newcastle Police Department at an annual salary, salary, mumbled in my words, sixty-six thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars. This appointment date will be January sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, or the date the Westchester County Department of Human Resources approves the resignation slash reinstatement. This appointment will be contingent upon the approved resignation slash reinstatement from the Westchester County Department of Human Resources, medical examinations and a probationary period of no more than fifty-two weeks.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the Department of Public Works to post and advertise for the hire of a laborer within the water unit for two weeks effective December twentieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to shell number twenty for the moment. Um, I move to authorize the Department of Public Works to hire Hazen and Sawyer Engineering, uh, of New York, New York for engineering design services for replacement boilers in the Millwood Water Treatment Plant for a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize a letter of support from the town of Newcastle for Westchester's SPCA, New York State Companion and Companion Animal Brand.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a better replacement.
Okay, hey, we know we're gonna do another roll call vote, because we missed one.
Uh-oh.
The basketball, okay, all right, uh, we, we, so, you ready? All right, here we go. A resolu- resolution authorizing improvements to the basketball court playground.
Separate from the.
Oh, that's for the electric, okay. Um, at Town Hall in and for the town of Newcastle, Westchester County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred eighty-four thousand, authorizing subject to permissive referendum, the issuance of two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars of bonds of said town to pay part of the cost thereof.
Second.
All in favor?
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
She still has to second.
She's second.
Really, Rob?
I'm just sorry, I was getting it right every time.
This is a roll call vote, Supervisor Greenstein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Deputy Supervisor.
Aye.
Okay, councilmember Slant?
Aye.
Councilmember Katz?
Aye.
Councilmember.
All right.
Yes.
Did you do the, did we do the SPCA letter?
Yeah, now we're up to the metro.
Yes, we did. Twenty-three.
I move to approve the following rates for the twenty-eighteen NEPCO health plan and retirement premiums. Nine hundred sixty dollars and ninety-five cents per month for individual coverage and two thousand thirteen fifty-two for family coverage for a term commencing on January one, twenty eighteen, and ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. This represents a three point two percent increase from the twenty-seventeen premium rates.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, I. I move to approve the following rates for the two thousand eighteen MVP healthcare plan HMO provider premiums, one thousand one oh three eighty-nine per month for individual coverage and two five nine four point one five for family coverage for a term commencing on February one, twenty eighteen and ending on January thirty-first, twenty nineteen. This represents a five point eight percent increase from the two thousand seventeen premium rates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we need to do the electric vehicle.
I think there's another one more?
There's a bit of claims.
Yeah, I move to approve payment claims in the amount of five hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents listed on the summary, check writing report and detailed voucher detail report, both dated December nineteenth, twenty seventeen. Checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, December twentieth, twenty seventeen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the execution of the two thousand eighteen full service agreement with partners in safety, eight hundred Route Seventeen and Middletown, New York, one oh nine four oh for an administrative cost of eight hundred sixteen dollars and fifty cents, additional charges attached in the agreement.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move to authorize the Department of Public Works to award the request for proposal, RFP, for the train station gutter replacement to Perry Barone Roofing LLC, twelve Center Street in Pleasantville, for a cost not to exceed twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we take out the last one?
All right, now let's, before we go on to the last one.
Okay.
Alright, now let's, before we go on to the last one, we were talking in the conversation earlier that the grant was to be split, because it was and/or, but the grant was to be split between the shuttle and some for the LED lights. The way that this resolution is worded, we are rejecting the LED lights and applying one hundred percent of the funds towards the shuttle. Is that your understanding of what the request is?
That's my understanding of what the resolution says, yes.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, here we go.
So we just, just understand that the possible, yeah, it seems to me that the town benefit, um, if, if we, if we apply the entire hundred thousand dollars for the lights to a project that's a million dollars, that's ten percent, it seems to me that the town benefit, um, of a electric shuttle that will enhance the fact that we are well-known leaders in sustainability, um, that will, um, encourage all kinds of, uh, travel back and forth between, it's not, I, I firmly believe it's not just going to be for the residents of Chapel Crossing. I think that, yes, absolutely, there'll be a primary beneficiaries for sure, but I think there'll be plenty of other folks who walk in this town who will appreciate that shuttle. And
I agree.
I just, you know, I think it's something that
Alright, it's gonna come down to the vote, don't worry, we'll get it.
Here's the vote. And by the way, this is my last vote. So. Now, I don't know how to vote.
How you quote, Warren, how do you quote, uh? A, 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 T, T, H?
Oh, so
W, W.
Hey. Where are we at?
Do you wanna read this one or?
No, no, go ahead, I'm getting choked up.
Alright, take your time.
Go for it.
I don't know, but you do it.
Go ahead, he's getting choked up, you do it.
Um.
Second.
Whereas in December twenty sixteen, the town of Newcastle became the first community in New York State and it side raged to receive the designation of Clean Energy Community, uh, CEC. Whereas in June twenty seventeen, the town applied for a hundred thousand dollars CEC grant by identifying two potential projects, contribution of CEC funds toward the purchase of an electric shuttle bus and, uh, contribution of those funds toward the purchase of decorative streetlights where, in the Chapel Crossing. Whereas the town CEC grant application was approved and whereas the town intends to utilize the CEC grant exclusively for the purchase of an electric shuttle bus, whereas the electric shuttle is expected to eliminate approximately fifty tons of GHG emissions every year, supplementing other town efforts, other efforts the town is taking to reduce its carbon footprint and remain as sustainable as possible. Now therefore, be it resolved, the town board directs town staff to modify and resubmit all applicable grant administration documents to reflect that the town intends to use the CEC grant exclusively for the purposes of an electric shuttle bus. And be it further resolved, the town staff is directed to proceed with identifying a vendor for the purchase of an electric shuttle in accordance with the town's procurement policy. And be it further resolved, the town administrators authorized to execute all documents in further of this resolution. Do you want to second it?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I'm gonna explain my vote, I am nay. And I just wanted to explain that basis, there was no misinterpretation, misunderstanding. It's, it's not objection to, uh, the Paris Accord that we have addressed. It's not an objection certainly to the SAB who have provided us routinely with sensible, smart, pro-environmental ideas. Um, this is even not an objection to an electric vehicle by any stretch of the imagination. What I'm concerned about is its use, uh, and viability. Um, I'm concerned that it provides a limited benefit to a limited group of people. Um, that limited group of people are at Chapel Crossing, uh, where it's going to be both a private and public dollars ultimately, because there are collateral costs and there are direct costs. Um, whereas the rest of the community, for example, has to take a taxi to go to the train stations. Uh, the rest of the community has to ask a neighbor for a ride if they don't have a car to go to the train station. Uh, find parking downtown. Um, I am concerned that, uh, while, yes, this may not cover all the expenses of LED lights, LED is certainly something that the SAB supported. Um, but what you're failing, I think, to recognize is that frees up a hundred thousand dollars, for example, to potentially get another electric vehicle for a police department for parking should they need it. So there's other uses of those dollars, to put park benches or something else back into the street street project, which arguably is something that everybody can benefit from. So it's not, it's not exclusive of any other environmental benefits. Um, you know, I, I can't stress enough, again, this is not a rejection of the SAB, it's not a rejection of this particular vehicle per se. I'm just concerned about its viability and the things that I addressed here. So, due to all those reasons, I am a nay.
Alright, and I will concur with everything that Jeremy says, but I would even add to that, which is, at a certain point, you have to say, if this were my family, my money, my budget, is this how I would spend my money? And when I take a look at a maximum distance on a single charge, and it takes eight hours to charge of ninety miles in perfect conditions, this bus really is limited only to the Summit Greenfield jitney process and maybe a few rare exceptions. The fact that we have not negotiated and come to any kind of financial arrangement with Summit Greenfield in terms of what their physical contribution is on this project, I think is a glaring gap. And it's basically putting a burden on the town that we should not have to take. Right now, we have just lost our bargaining position, because we're basically saying we're doing this. And Summit Greenfield says, maybe I will, maybe I won't. I don't think it's particularly good business stance. I also feel that, um, we have an obligation to do the greatest good for the greatest number. And this is very limited good for a very specific population. Yes, there may be some ancillary benefits, but it's not even fifty-fifty. And I think that something like the LED lights or any of the other ideas that the SAB proposed and sponsored would have had a greater good to a greater number of people. I want to close by saying, I admire you guys so much, I think you do wonderful work. I typically would support everything, I just felt that this one, what's it called, jumped the shark on practicality.
Okay. Actually, Adam and Lisa, we voted, I voted yes, and I'll just do a short little speech.
I'm a no.
I'll just do a short little speech and thank you, SAB, for all of you, all you do to help us get the grant and for your work to, uh, make this ve- electric vehicle a reality. I look forward to the day that I see that vehicle going up and down the hill, knowing that this is who we are as a community and that we're doing our part to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions, so thank you. You guys have to vote. You don't have to give long speeches, but you have to vote.
Okay, I'll give a speech. I, um, think Hala is right that we need to speak with Summit Greenfield about this. Um, given that this resolution is directing town staff to identify a vendor to purchase it, um, and not actually to purchase it. And given that, I actually think it's gonna be used a lot more than we think and I think to be able to fulfill the Paris Accord in some way and to give people the, um, give accessibility between Chapel Crossing and downtown, especially, um, for shows and at times when we wanna support restaurants and, and other merchants. I think it's important and I think light bulbs we're gonna purchase anyway, so I'm voting yes.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Adam, I just wanna say, first of all, it's a great pleasure to have worked with you. You're one of the nicest people that I know, you've got a great sense of humor, you put a lot of passion into your job, and you have a very happy family, which is all enviable. And thank you so much.
And you've left your mark.
Oh, couldn't have said that better.
And you've left your mark on this community, it's that simple.
Yes, you have.
You've left your mark on this community. That's the bottom line.
I'll, I'll leave with something not as profound, but I will say that you are nothing but a gentleman, I've enjoyed working with you. I am sure it's not the end of us working together or even seeing one another.
Alright.
Um, I may walk the other way, because I don't wanna associate with you, but I know I'll soon see you.
But he'll see you.
But I'll see you.
He'll see you coming.
I'll hide, I'll hide, I'll hide the electric shuttle bus. But, but no, truly, genuinely and truly, you are a really gentleman, I really enjoyed working with you and I respect you completely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.